Here we go.
I just forgot my pocket in the other room. I'm just gonna go grab it. I can hear all the kids over at the park playing. It's such a good sound.
Nice.
Feel like we haven't heard it for so long.
Yeah, I love seeing the kids out and about.
Such a nice evening, too.
It's a beautiful evening. And I was thinking, we could have had this meeting outdoors, but you know, when you plan something, then inevitably it rains. It's terrible, but this would have been a good one for outdoors. Are you gonna go to the Wannika meeting tomorrow?
Yes, I hope to. I'm trying.
I have to leave. Well, my daughter's running in Fort- my granddaughter's running in Fortuna at four o'clock. So I told Karen, I said, let's get the business over with, and then I can leave at 3:15 and make it.
Right.
But I know everybody is anxious to see each other because we haven't been together in a year.
Yeah. Crazy to think it's been a year.
I know.
Make sure this is recording. We should be getting some people on here in a second.
I know. Where's our council?
It's too sunny outside.
Yeah, they're playing. Is April taking our minutes?
She is, yes.
Oh, great. Good. That frees you up. That's.
The last one was a little hectic. I was like, oh, we were like, oh, it'll be fine. It's just, you know, like, it's pretty minor. And then there were so many public comments. I was like, writing like crazy.
Nothing is ever easy.
No, I know we jinxed ourselves.
Just letting you know I'm on Mandy, but I'm probably gonna keep my video off because I'm starving. So, but I am here.
Because I'm hungry, too, so.
I just did the TRX class, so.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, but um, you know, I'm here, and when you want to do roll call, I can do that and everything, too.
Okay, thanks. How do you like that class?
It would- this was the first time I did it. It was really awesome. So I really liked it. I really liked the teacher and everything.
Nice. I'm thinking about trying that one out.
Yeah.
Where- where is it?
At the club. The club that's in McKinleyville, the Club for Fitness. It's literally called The Club.
Okay.
It's by the theater, by the Mill Creek Theater.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's- it's great. I love- yeah, I've been there now for over a year, and it's been- it's awesome, so.
Yeah.
It's the Native Americans on that, don't they?
Yes.
Is that the one? Good. Yeah, I started yoga back about a week ago. I got back into yoga. They're- they're having it at the grain. Sheila's having it. And we're all vaccinated, which is cool. So, you know, I could still do a down dog.
Hey, Mandy, real quick, are you- are you loading up the PowerPoint for when I do my thing, or am I doing it from my share screen from here? We never got a chance to talk today.
You know, honestly, Mike, it might be easier if you did it. Sometimes it glitches mine out.
I can do it on a share screen if you allow.
Yeah, I'll share. Yeah, yeah.
All right, sorry. Started, I wanted to.
Yeah, I have two screens going, and sometimes when I have it, it starts to like, I don't know if it's just our bandwidth or what the problem is, but.
Okay.
Especially this time of night, everyone must go home and like, be streaming Netflix or something. Let's see, we have. Chris. Oh, there's Chris.
Yeah, Chris is here.
Chris and Elaine.
Elaine, I see, but I don't see Summer or Olivia. And I have 6:30.
Talked to Summer today, so she should be on here any second. But there's three of you, so.
Yeah, there is a quorum technically. You haven't heard anything from Olivia?
I haven't. She was gonna come over here and use Back Office, but she hasn't come over, so.
Yeah, that's an option she could do.
Get my mouse hooked up.
Oh, Summer's on.
Okay.
Oh, here comes Olivia.
Good. Okay, looks like our council is all here. I'd like to get the meeting started. This is our Blue Lake City Council regular meeting of Tuesday, April 27th, 2021, starting at 6:30. In accordance with the Governor's executive orders, N-25-20 and N-29-20, the City Council, the City of Blue Lake, can conduct the City Council meeting by teleconference via Zoom. And there are ways for us to log into this. So we will forego of the Pledge of Allegiance because it gets a little garbled when everyone speaks that together. But I'm going to ask our city clerk.
Yeah.
Well, former city clerk, I guess, who's taking our minutes this evening, April Sousa, to establish a quorum of the council, please.
Sorry, I hit the wrong button there. Okay, um, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doherty.
Present.
Councilmember Obada Dunn.
Here, present.
And Councilmember Hogan.
Here.
Okay, we have a full council this evening. Item two is approval of the agenda. Is there anyone, first of all, from council that would like to move or change anything on the agenda? Seeing nothing, is there anyone from audience that's here for a particular item that would like to be moved up in the agenda?
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
So it was brought to my attention that we have the adjournment on number 14, but we have an item on number 15 for the council discussion on the hybrid meetings. Ryan, does that make sense to move 15 up and have 14 as the end?
Yeah, that's a good- that's a good change because I had a citizen call me yesterday about wanting to know what a hybrid meeting is. So let's do switch 14 and 15, so then we can explain what that's all about. Okay, if there's no other corrections or changes.
There is a hand here.
Hi, Meg Stofsky, community member and an AACP member. I did want to correct what, or actually add that the minutes did not include the local organization Coalition for Responsible Transportation priorities that I had mentioned in last month's meeting when looking at some of the comments from the public about safety issues for various intersections. And so it was mentioned that I said something, but I very specifically said, and I'm hoping people make use of the Coalition for Responsible Transportation options because they kind of oversee a lot of different things like both ADA and safety concerns and traffic and encouraging, you know, slowdown kinds of things and looking at dangerous intersections. So I was hoping that that could at least get added in in case anybody wants to follow up with them, which I did. I haven't heard back saying that, you know, that is an organization that can help Blue Lake in some of these concerns.
Okay, Meg, our minutes are on the agenda. They're item 10C. And so I don't know if you'll be here when that happens, but we'll make a note that you wanted to have that included in the minutes when we.
Oh, okay. I thought- I'm sorry. I thought that's what you were asking, that the next step was approving the minutes.
No, I'm approving the agenda right now.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, no problem.
My brain.
Okay, that's no problem, Meg. Okay, so I think what I'd like to have is a motion to approve the agenda with items 14 and 15 switched.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Summer, Doherty, did you move?
Yes.
Thank you. Summer moved, seconded by Chris Curran to approve the agenda as delivered with the change of switching 14 and 15. Roll call vote. City Clerk Sousa.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Obada Dunn. Sorry about that.
You got it.
Councilmember Hogan.
Done. Oh, yes, yes.
Yes.
Awesome. And Mayor Jones.
Yes. Okay, we have an agenda. All right, item three is Zoom protocol presentation by Mayor Protam Doherty. So we have some things in our packet, and Summer's going to go over some learning experiences for all of us on Zoom because we're still learning. We are still learning.
Manny, do you have it? Then you could put it up as a share screen. Sorry, I'm not on my computer. Can you? I can start in. So the reason for this is just that having an understanding of the functions that are available to participants really help make for smooth meetings and for especially during public comment, in the public comment section, or when commenting on a specific item. That way, when the mayor is running through and trying to figure out who would like to provide a comment, it's- it's very kind of a smooth transition. So are you at all able to pull that up?
Um, yeah.
And share it? Okay. And so the intent is really just to demonstrate what functions are available to participants so that when you want to mute or unmute, or turn your video on or off, or use the chat box if it's enabled, and provide any reactions or raise and lower your hand. So the quickest- the easiest thing is to look at your participant- the, I'm sorry, at the bottom of your screen on your Zoom window, you should have these icons that give you the option from the very far left to mute and unmute yourself and to turn the video on or off. So the video on or off is the yellow circle. The mute or unmute is the red circle. And so that's- that's starting from the left side of your screen. And then moving over towards the middle, you'll see a little icon that's two people, and it's a participants window. That's a useful one because then you can actually see all the people that are in your meeting, and the participants window is shown here to the right. And then if the chat box is enabled, which I believe it's disabled for this meeting, okay, reactions are ways that you can send, I think there's like a clap, a thumbs up, a smiley face, and if you would like to provide a reaction to somebody's comment or a discussion. And then if you'd like to raise and lower your hand in the participant window, which is the kind of the purple square, there it- the participant window comes up on the right-hand side. So you select the participant window. Then you can see all of your fellow people that are in the meeting. And at the bottom of the participant window, there are the three- it's the three dots menu. And you can select that, and it will come up with Raise Your Hand. And then once you click up and you select that, a little hand next to your name will show up. And that means then staff and the mayor can actually see who has raised their hand that has a comment on during public comment or at what- or a specific item. And then in order to lower your hand, you just select those same three dots, and it will say Lower Hand. And then if you scroll down to the last one, Manny, this just kind of gives you like, here they all are. This is where you find them. And feel free to practice it now if you'd like. Click on the participant window and select the three dots at the bottom. And- and then basically raise your hand, and then you can do it again and lower it. So just some tips on different functions that are available for use so that I wish that originally somebody had explained that to me. It took some time to figure those all out. So just wanted to help with our- with running through public comment and comments during- during specific items so that it's- it's easy for Adeline to go through the participant window and see how has their hand raised that would like to comment rather than trying to scroll through images and looking for hands. And it just, it makes it- we want to make sure that we're not missing somebody. So that's it. Is there any questions? Feel free to ask. All right, back to you, Adeline.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to that during- oh, Olivia, yeah, you had a question?
Is that- is the way that the council members participate the same, or is that mostly just for participants, or?
That's for public comment. And when- so each item that we run through typically, Adeline will provide, there will be, you know, a presentation or some sort of presentation, and then Adeline typically will then say, are there any comments from council? And then once that we run through the council members, then she opens it up to the public. So this is a real- this is essentially a way, like, the protocol on how to raise your hand when you're- you want to participate so that then she can go down the list and say, okay, here's who's next and- and who has their hand up.
Okay.
Yeah.
So right now, I just pushed participant, and I see all the people that are participating here that are on this meeting. So that's a helpful little icon that I just learned about. And I also want to say that when we have a lot of participants wanting to speak, I am going to ask one of the council members to be our timekeeper so that we can keep the we can limit the amount. I don't want to say limit, but we just want to keep the timing so that each person will have three minutes to speak, at least at one time. And then if you want to later on, if you want to chime in, something triggered your interest, and you want to chime in for another three minutes. But just to keep some of the comments under control as far as timing goes. Our last meeting went pretty long.
Adeline, you have- Ms. Burns has her hand up.
Okay, Kit.
Their hand up. I'm sorry. Ms. Burns is waiting. Yep.
Okay, Ms. Burns and then Kit.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know that when I pulled up the participant box, I did not get a choice to raise hands, but I raised my hand through the restrictions, reactions, circle.
Okay. I think it's- sometimes it's different for different computers or like a tablet. So sometimes it's a little bit different. So thanks for pointing that out. So if you don't find it in the participant- sorry, if you don't find it in the participant window, you can find it in the reactions. So thank you very much for pointing that out.
Okay, Kit, what was your comment?
Same- same thing. Got the answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Summer, for that- that little lesson that we all need. We're on item four now, public input. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the City Council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the City of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. So this is the time when public can come in on anything that's not already listed on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment or make an announcement that's not on the agenda? Okay, Lynn Glenn has her hand up. Lynn?
Yes, I have a question actually about the city's website. I went to the website to look for past agendas and the agenda packets because I had some questions, and I didn't find any past meetings. I just found the present meeting. And I don't know if it's because I'm not using the website properly, but I did check on Trinidad and Arcata's websites, just for examples. And they- they both pretty clearly have all of their meetings, agendas, minutes, and packets available on the website. And all I found was the minutes from past meetings. Is- is there a way to get to past meeting agendas and packets as well?
I'll defer to Amanda. I think we are just putting just the minutes and the agenda, aren't we, Amanda?
We are. We do have all of our packets and agendas archived, though, so if there is something that you wanted from the city, we can provide that, but we haven't- we haven't been saving those to the website, just the minutes.
Is there a reason? I mean, other cities seem to do that, and I think it's pretty helpful. Is there a reason why- is there a reason why the city could not do that?
I don't think there's a reason why we couldn't. I don't know if there's a storage capacity issue with our website. Those packets are usually really large. In fact, I'm having kind of a hard time even just getting them on the website. I'm having to upload items multiple- in multiple files because we do have a limitation. So I'd have to just look into it, see if that's the limiting factor, but if it's not, I'm sure we could figure out a way to host it.
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful. And again, since other cities seem to be doing that, I think it'd be a good thing for the city as well. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there any other public input on an item that's not on the agenda? Yes. Carpani?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm Carpani Burns, and I'm a Humboldt resident. And I was here at the very beginning of the meeting, but I know- I think I noticed that there was no land acknowledgement. Does the council not do land acknowledgement that we are on unceded, we ought land?
No, we haven't done that typically. We have had the flag salute, but we've been not doing that because it's difficult for everyone to say the flag salute at the same time on Zoom. So no, we've never had an acknowledgement of the land that we're on.
So might I suggest that- that- that the council make an agreement to discuss that that- that might be an all-inclusive acknowledgement, since we are on unceded, we ought land?
We can agendize that for our next meeting and discuss it.
I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your suggestion. Seeing another hand, Meg?
You'll need to unmute yourself. Oh, there you are.
There I am. So I wanted to, again, suggest that we agendize, as Lynn had, if necessary, as Lynn Glenn had said, I strongly support being able to access all of the agenda packets, as is consistent with all of the other townships and cities in this area. And also agendize the- wanted to support the land acknowledgement that Carpani just suggested. I think those are really good suggestions for those of us just becoming, you know, up to speed here with your city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll- we'll look into doing that for sure. Thank you for your suggestions. Is there any other public input? Okay, I don't see any hands, so we'll move on to our public hearings. Item five. Item 5A, Consider Adopting Resolution Number 1184, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Blue Lake, amending the land use element of the Blue Lake General Plan and amending the general plan map to apply the mixed-use MU and open-space OS designation to properties in the Powers Creek District, formerly Blue Lake Business Park. We will have a discussion and a possible vote on this item. Do we have our planner today, or is it Mike that's going to take this item?
We have Gary here, Gary Reese, our city planner. And then we also have one of our city attorneys, Ryan Plotz, is here to explain this item.
Okay, well, I guess we should start then with our city planner, Gary Reese. Would you like to give us an overview? And then we can discuss and open the public hearing. Go ahead, Gary.
Sure. I'll go ahead and just kind of give a little summary of some of the information that was in the staff report that was included in your packet. So as you noted, you know, this- this items for amendments of the general plan land use elements and the general plan map. And work on these amendments originally began back in 2014 under a grant from the California Strategic Growth Council. And the amendments proposed under the SGC grant were for the purpose of incorporating sustainable development principles into the land use element. And these were things related to mixed-use developments, protection and restoration of creeks and wetlands, protection of cultural resources, improving onsite stormwater management, increasing common usable open space, encouraging alternative modes of transportation, and energy efficiency, among- among other sustainable development principles. And this work was completed in 2015, but the proposed amendments were not adopted by the council at that time. Then from 2017 to 2019, staff worked with the Planning Commission on proposed amendments to the land use element to provide consistency with multiple things, including. to provide consistency with multiple things, uh, including rebranding of the Blue Lake Business Park as a Powers Creek district, uh, the proposed opportunity zone, which is the next, uh, public hearing item that we'll be hearing. And then also allowing mixed uses, including commercial and residential in the former business park. So, uh, in April 2019, the planning commission adopted its recommendations to the council for amendments to the land use element, as I noted, and amendment of the general plan map to apply the mixed use and open space designations to properties in the Powers Creek district. And as shown on the maps included in your packet, the mixed use designation is proposed to be applied to properties north and south of Taylor Way that are primarily designated industrial at this time. And the open space designation is proposed to be applied to portions of the Powers Creek riparian corridor and the Mad River levee that are currently designated industrial. And so the recommendation from the planning commission for these amendments was received by the council at the May 2020 meeting. And for May 2020 to this recent February, uh, the city council held public hearings and received public input on these proposed amendments. And the council did not make any revisions to the planning commission recommendation for these amendments. So this item's been scheduled for a public hearing tonight for the council to adopt the proposed amendments through the adoption of a resolution. And is stated in the staff recommendation for this item, it's recommended that the council receive this report from staff about the proposed amendments, open the public hearing and take public testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt resolution number 1184. So that concludes my report and staff's available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Planner Gary Reese. And, um, I don't know if, uh, City Manager Mager would like to add anything or, um, I see also that our, I thought I saw that, um, Mike Fogut was here as well. If there's anything they want to add before I open the public hearing.
I'm good. Um, Gary always does a really thorough job of, um, explaining and synthesizing all of, um, the process, so.
Yes, and I, I think the most, um, most change that we're seeing with this is the fact that we're opening up our minds and opening up our ideas to the opportunity for our Powers Creek district to become more of a district where it does include residences. It turns out that there are a lot of people that would really like to live in an area that's so beautiful, so close to the river and recreational area there. And, um, so this is a way that we're, we are making a change, but I think it's a good change from 40 years ago when we first obtained this property. And now we're looking at the possibilities, opening up, that people can live above businesses and be part of the district and it be, uh, almost a little community or a village within a village as, as, um, it moves towards that goal. Um, anything, anyone else would like to remark from council or staff before I open the public hearing? Okay, then, um, I'm going to officially open the public hearing. Um, before I do though, I would like to ask one of my council members if they would be a timekeeper for me, um, either Chris or Elaine or Summer or Olivia. Um, you know, if you have, you know, your phone or something that you can, um, just give us a three-minute warning for a person that's talking so that we make sure that we get everyone's input and we, um, keep it under control. Um, would anyone like to, um, do that? Thank you, Elaine. Thank you. Okay. All right, I'm going to officially open the public hearing. If you would use your hand signal or, um, any, or your icon, I will call you as I see them and I.
I believe, we have, I believe it's a, you have to motion to open it. Is that correct, Ryan?
No, as, as, uh, the mayor's chair can open the public.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm officially opening the public hearing. Okay, and I see a hand next to Kit Mann. Um, so Kit, go ahead and, or is that Kat? I'm sorry. Kat? I see a hand up there, but I don't know if that person wants to speak.
Kat, did you want to provide a comment?
I don't know. Maybe she just left her hand up. Oh, there. Kat, did you want to make a comment on this item? Okay, we.
It looks, it looks like her audio is having troubles connecting. Do you want to give her a few minutes and maybe, uh, let somebody else speak and come back to Kat?
That's fine.
Kat, your audio, oh, there you are. Did you connect? Unmute? Want to unmute yourself? There's still no audio, although it looks like you're unmuted.
Maybe your volume is down. You might up the volume. I don't know.
The, so the other tricks are you can change your speakers, I believe, in, um, in your little microphone. There's options to change the speakers if needed. Um, I don't know what other tips to, other than to call in as well, but.
Yeah, there is that option. That's true. I don't see anyone else wanting to make a comment. Okay, Lauren Elliott, I do see your hand up. Would you like to make a comment, please?
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, my, I'm, I'm actually Paul Elliott, but it's, uh, under my wife's name, the link.
Okay.
Um, we, we've only been here eight months and, uh.
Welcome to Blue Lake.
Thank you. Um, the rea, the reason we moved here was for the very fact of how Blue Lake is. Um, it worries me, having lived here in the eight months, how, how it is that Blue Lake is going to cope with this additional population increase if, if it really does go ahead. Um, it seems like, from, from what I understand, it seems like a, a, about a 10% increase in the Blue Lake population. And I'm just wondering how that affects the actual town in itself.
Okay, well, um, the, the elementary school really needs students. I know that for one thing. Um, the state, um, Paul, is coming down, um, pretty hard on cities to provide housing for people. And even a little city like Blue Lake has, um, a mandate from the city to come up with 40 additional houses or dwellings for people. Um, and we allow ADUs, which is auxiliary dwelling units on people's, uh, backyards. But there's a lot of people that like their gardens and like their, um, space there. They don't want an ADU there and they don't want to be landlords. Um, and we've given lots of incentives, like, um, uh, reducing the power of the, the cost of hooking up, um, the water and sewer and that kind of thing. Um, I think that at one time, Blue Lake was much bigger than it is now. It was a big thriving lumber company. I know that our, our lumber town. I know that our water and sewer, um, we've looked at that and we, and we feel we are able to, um, have the capacity to include, uh, more dwellings. Um, so I, I think it's an opportunity for Blue Lake to have more citizens. And, and change is hard, I know, but I think this is a, a good opportunity, a good, a good, uh, way for Blue Lake to, to head.
So, so could I ask, it's, um, from what I understand, it's like, uh, obviously I'm still picking up on what's going on. Um, I originally.
I'm going to end it up really quick, Paul. Um, just as a reminder that this is a public input session, uh, as a public hearing to receive feedback on the land use component of this resolution.
Okay.
And, um, I mean, this, there is language in here that talks about preserving the characteristics that make our town unique and all that. So if you have specific comments about, um, this land use, uh, resolution, we also go into talking about the opportunity zone next, which is, um, item B, that maybe, that might be at that point, but.
Okay, thank you.
I, yeah, I just, I think it's important to remember that this is a point where we're trying to receive input from everybody so that it can be considered in moving forward.
Okay.
I think it looks like reconnected to audio.
Okay, Kat, can we try you again there? Yeah. I just don't see that happening.
Is this the kind of thing, maybe they could write in chat, the chat? Sorry.
We have the chat disabled because of issues with security. We've had problems in the past with, um, the Zoom bombing.
Right.
But we could, if Kat wanted to submit it, uh, via email or something, uh, we can, you know, take that at some point.
Okay, um, I'm sorry that we have that problem, that this is not a perfect world and we're still learning about this technology. A lot of it depends on things that we cannot foresee or control, unfortunately. Um, are there any other people in the audience that would like to make a, a statement concerning this item? Paul, did you want to make an?
No, 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 sorry. I just, I just realized I had to lower my hand.
Okay, great. Okay, um, I don't see any other hands up. So I'm going to officially close the public hearing. And, um, we can discuss or we can have a motion to adopt resolution number 1184.
Mayor Adeline, I think Ted, or Ted Hales.
Okay, thank you. Ted Hales, would you like to make a comment, sir?
Hello, this is Elise Scipani with Ted Hales. Um, and, um, anyway, um, so I guess I want to find out if we have no more public input. Is that me, does that mean that you're going to vote this resolution or vote on this resolution tonight? Or what's, what's at stake here exactly?
Uh, if we have a motion at a second, we will take a vote and it will pass if there's a majority of the council that agrees that we should pass this resolution.
Okay, and I guess, um, I have not personally been able to review, um, the resolution in, um, in the detail I would like to. But, um, so I guess I'm wondering if, um, I mean, I, I understand this has been a discussion item for some time, uh, so I'm a little late to the party. But, um, I guess I'm wondering, you know, kind of in the light of, of some of the new things that are coming up, I know a lot of people are more involved than they have been and wondering if, uh, we might have a little more time, uh, to review and learn about the, the proposal before it's voted on.
Um, I have a suggestion. Um, Gary or somebody that has access to the packet, it sounds like people may not have been able to see, like, the maps, for example, that are in our packet that show where we're talking about applying the mixed use and open space designation, designations. And there are very clearly like two maps, one that shows like it's all industrial right now. And we're proposing to apply mixed use and open space, like open space to the trail around the levee. Like, is there any more information that we might be able to provide to people, um, that didn't get the full packet? That might help.
Or maybe, um, maybe having something posted in the windows at the Skinner store so people can go by and actually see an actual map in color and, and maybe understand better what, what we're talking about.
Yeah, the, we have been having this discussion, uh, for quite a few meetings and, um, the packet was available for people to obtain at City Hall. Um, the map is especially, um, uh, good at explaining things if you're a visual learner, which a lot of us are, um, exactly what the change is, um, as far as the mixed use and the, um, the other uses. So, um, but I believe the council has had plenty of time, um, to peruse these materials and it has been on the agenda for a number of meetings, um, as well as on the planning commission agenda. So, um, I would still like to, um, move forward on this item if it's the pleasure of the council that we do that. Meg?
You're muted, Meg.
Okay, so one comment would be that this is exactly the reason why, um, past agendas and packets need to be up and, uh, available to all who want to, uh, look at them rather than, you know, uh, I'm, you know, elderly and I have many issues, lung issues, so I don't, I don't go out. So that's why these things need to be made available for, uh, people to understand. Um, my question would be, uh, you mentioned that, um, you're under mandate to come up with 40 more houses or residential, um, opportunities in Blue Lake. So does this satisfy that, um, mandate that you're under?
Well, it, it doesn't specifically satisfy it. What it does though is opens up the possibilities that now we can have what we call mixed use, which means residences along with businesses. Previous to that, the Powers Creek di- district was nothing but business. So what we're doing now is we're opening up the opportunity of having our district become mixed use, meaning residences as well as businesses. Our vision is that that would be above the businesses. The residences would be above the businesses. But this is one of the reasons why we're moving in this direction.
So it's part of a larger, um, uh, city, uh, plan to, um, satisfy, uh, those requirements that even a little tiny place like you all have to, uh, uh, come up with, um, more housing and that, you know, my recollection of, uh, federal housing mandates are that at least a portion of that be considered, um, affordable housing units. So this is the step necessary to taking those next steps, if I'm understanding what you're saying then.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
And the next resolution goes a little further in, into that, but, um, this is the first step. Uh, I now see a hand, uh, Ted Hales.
That was, that was Elise still.
Oh, that was Elise. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And then Kat has her hand up, but we still cannot get connected with Kat.
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, different device.
Okay.
With my question? It, it's going to be very, uh, non-sequiturous now, but it was actually a question for Gary in reference to, uh, his information about the staff recommendations, uh, and on these zoning changes. Um, so I wanted to ask Gary, you said that you've gotten the recommendation, recommendations from staff? And I was wondering what, who are the staff members that are making recommendations?
Sure, I can address that. Um, and, and what I was saying as stated in the staff recommendation, so there's a staff report that's included with the council packet for each item and that the end of each one of those staff reports, it contains what staff's recommendation is. And typically those are put together by either the city planner, city manager, city attorney, whoever's working on that particular staff report. In this case, I developed the recommendation and it was reviewed by the city attorney and then included in the packet.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you for your input. Lynn Glenn, you had your hand up as well?
Yeah, I, I had a question for Gary. This was, this item was described to me by a member of the planning commission. And, and this affects other areas of the city as well, correct? So I'm just wondering if there are other examples of different types of zoning that this would affect in other parts of the city.
Well, the primary change really is that it's providing consistency with the newly proposed opportunity zone. That's a primary zoning related change. Otherwise, there are policies and goals in there that would apply citywide, you know, such as the protections of creeks and wetlands. Wherever there may be creeks and wetlands in the city, those goals and policies would apply and will ultimately be implemented through amendments to the municipal code, which we have not developed or proposed at this time. But.
Pipe one out, Fred.
Sorry, sorry. Anyway, you might want to turn your mic off.
Sorry.
So, so yeah, you know, when we're talking about a lot of those sustainable development principles that I noted before, those would in essence apply citywide in any relevant situation in any zone related to stormwater management, common usable open space, encouraging alternative modes, protection of cultural resources, all that kind of stuff. And really, the primary changes that were made from 2017 to 2019, as I noted, was to provide consistency with one of the biggest things, which is rebranding of the Blue Lake Business Park as the Powers Creek District. And I know you guys were very involved in, in commenting on that process. So that's one of the big items and that includes allowing mixed uses, including commercial residential in the form of business park. You know, we also kind of take away the focus in these amendments from the downtown as the city center. We're now more defining both the downtown and the Powers Creek District as the city center that would have commerce and mixed uses and things of that nature. So, yeah, that, that's about as best as I can answer your, your question at this time.
So would that allow businesses and industries in other parts of the city as well?
Not really. All, you know, like I said, all this is doing is providing consistency with the opportunity zone, which is a, would be a new tool in the city zoning toolbox that could be potentially applied anywhere that would be appropriate for this type of mixed mixture of land uses. At this time, the Powers Creek District is considered to be the most appropriate location for the opportunity zone in this type of mixture of, of land uses.
So you're saying that this, I'm a little confused, I'm sorry. So you're, it kind of sounds like you're saying the opportunity zoning, zoning would be consistent throughout the city, which would mean, of course, that we would be encouraging businesses in other residential parts of the city, correct?
No, no, that's not correct. I don't think there's any amendments in here in the land use element that say that the opportunity zone would be appropriate anywhere in the city. It's very far from that. It would only be appropriate in locations where a mixture of these type of uses of commercial manufacturing and high density residential uses would be appropriate. That's not appropriate in, say, areas that are currently zoned for single family residential, which is the majority of the city.
Okay, I was confused as to what the, the purpose was, but, okay, thanks for that clarification.
Can I, can I speak for a minute? I just want to say that, this is David Glenn, I just wanted to say that I'm actually totally opposed to this idea. I'm opposed to the idea of incorporating residences into the industrial area, no matter what it's called. And I think that it's going to stop. It's, it's actually going to have a blocking effect on commercial and, and further light industrial uses of the area. I also think it's a lousy place to put residences, particularly high density residences. So, so while I agree with the, the goals that you've stated, the other goals of protecting creeks and things like that, I I want to be firm that I, that I do not agree with this idea. I think this is, well, it's possible for us to make our zoning in, in words compatible with our general plan, but the fact is that functionally high density residences are not compatible with light industrial uses. And I don't think that we're going to be able to make them that through whatever wording we put in. So anyway, that's just what I wanted to add in. I went in at length last time into why I feel that way. But anyway.
Thank you for your input. Councilperson Dunn?
Thanks, Mayor Adeline. I, I wanted to kind of share a little bit of my experience and just kind of as a person who doesn't, who's having a hard time looking for housing right now in Blue Lake, that this kind of opportunity feels exciting to me. And yeah, I was a Delarte student and since leaving Delarte, well, what was Delarte Housing, yeah, it's just been really hard and I've kind of been house, couch surfing and I have a son here. I, I kind of really resonate with why maybe the state is putting pressure to make housing more accessible because I don't know if you've tried looking, you know, but it's just so, it's just so hard to find things. And my son goes to school here and we, we want to stay, but so I just feel optimistic about especially the, the sense of village and community that it seems like this opportunity could have. To me, that sounds really appealing and exciting.
Thank you, Olivia. Um, that's, that's a very good point. Any other comments? Yes?
Yep, just a quick comment. I, I didn't realize this was going to be a, not a public hearing format, but more of a back and forth. So I want to apologize to Paul for cutting him off earlier and say, please chime in. Please come back with additional comments that you, you may have, and I apologize for cutting you off.
I think my concern right now is to just make sure that the comments are limited to three minutes, which I thank Elaine for helping with that. And if there has to be a little question and answer, I'm, I'm, you know, completely open to that in the spirit of transparency. Did you want to make another comment, Paul, or a question?
Yes, I do. So has, has there been feedback from businesses that actually want to move to Blue Lake?
Yes, Amanda and I are both nodding our hands up and down. You know, the interesting part about it, for those of us that have lived in Blue Lake for a long time, Amanda's lived here her whole life and generations. I've lived here for 45 years, which I think is a pretty good long time. The, the change that's happened is, is so very interesting. At the first onset of getting this property from a mill company that went out of business, the, the business park was actually called an industrial park and we were looking at it as an industry. And over the years, what has happened is the Mad River Brewery has come in with their retail and their restaurant. We've got Jules Distillery, we've got some other businesses that are more compatible with socialization and with more of a community. And then just looking at the location of this beautiful piece of property right near the river and the lovely place that it is, it turns out that people would very much like to live in an area like that, you know, very much. And so we are now opening our minds and opening our ideas to this change of having residences mixed in with businesses, just like you would have downtown Arcata with businesses below and housing above. And people are happy. They go downstairs and they walk to a market. There's opportunities for more businesses to come in. So there's been an evolution and I think it's a good one. And I think, you know, some people may have a problem with it, but I think that we can look at it and we can make it what we want it to be, to be the best possible situation that we can get.
So, so regarding, regarding sort of the affordable housing, could, could you have any insight onto how that is allocated?
Well, we, we don't know. I mean, nowadays, you know, it was brought to my attention that a person is with a, with a, with a salary of $47,000 a year is considered needing affordable housing. Now, if you think of it that way, that's a first year teacher. That's, you know, a first year teacher, teacher makes about $38,000 a year. So this is housing that could go to a first year teacher, essentially. You know, I mean, the, the threshold is, is pretty high in a way, if you want to look at it that way. So and again, we're looking at what the state is telling us that we need to do. We're built out here in Blue Lake. I mean, there's many yards that have mother-in-law units or a little rental or a garage with something on top. You know, we're, we're giving people opportunities to do that, but we're built out. We're one square mile this city. And so at some point we have to look at, well, what are some other places? I mean, the area behind the school, for instance, that's wetlands. You can't develop much of that. You can develop some of it, but not all of it. So this is where we're at and this is how we're coming up with these ideas.
Yeah, and, and, and I have no concern because I've only been, I haven't been here long enough to understand the full impact of everything. But I'm, I'm just concerned that Blue Lake doesn't become a dumping ground. That's my concern because it's like it's, this is why we moved here for the, the actual environment that we've got.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's going to be a problem. I mean, Blue Lake is so desirable right now. I mean, try to find a place to sell, to buy or rent here. It's, and it's been like that for quite a few years. I mean,
Oh, you don't have to tell me. We just, we just have to pay, so we know.
Yeah, exactly. I don't have to tell you. Are there any other questions or comments as we move through this process?
I'd like to make one comment.
Okay, Elise.
Thank you. As a 33-plus-year resident of Blue Lake, I have seen quite a few businesses attempt to exist in Blue Lake and darn near every one of them has failed. And so, and I under, you know, I know we're going to talk about a, a noise ordinance later in this agenda. And and I just, you know, the whole light industrial thing, I mean, what can really survive in Blue Lake is the question in terms of business. I mean, residential is great. I love living here. Some of my friends might like to live here. It would be nice to have a little more space for people to live. But at the same time, I think that we might be kidding ourselves when we say we're going to have mixed use and we're going to have residential next to light industrial because, you know, the, the retail doesn't survive here. You know, and I don't think we could bring enough people in here to, to make any more retail survive. You know, over and over and over again, these businesses have failed. And so it's hard to imagine that, that trying to make that mix work is really going to be successful. And I know I, I've heard some people express a similar concern, but I guess, you know, the way, the way it gets mixed, you know, has, has a lot to do with it. The sound ordinance is going to have a lot to do with it. But, you know, I definitely have a concern about, about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment. I don't know. I guess I like to be more optimistic about things. I mean, I think this, this idea of having residences in with businesses may actually help businesses. I mean, I'm looking at, you know, a possible store or something like that. So sometimes, you know, what comes first, the horse or the cart? You, you're not really sure. I mean, at this point, we've tried just businesses and you're right, some of them have failed. Some of them are doing remarkably well. You know, the little coffee shop is doing wonderfully out there, even during COVID. So some businesses are doing, are doing fine. The Mad River Brewery, you know, we have some businesses. So I like to be a little more optimistic about this and I think, I think we can try it and I think it will succeed.
Actually, it's Rebecca.
Hi, Rebecca.
Hi there. Quick comment, and that is, Adeline, it's great that you're optimistic. The truth is, this is a commuter town. People go into Arcata and Eureka. Not that many people actually live and work in Blue Lake. And having been on the school board for 13 years, it's been a while, but this was a drain to Arcata for many, many years from the school. There are eight kids in my neighborhood. Not one of them goes to Blue Lake School. Their parents all work in town and the kids go to school in town. So to think that you're going to bring in people who necessarily will increase the population of the school is something you really, really need to rethink. And you really need to rethink that while over time, it's conceivable that Blue Lake could be a commercial center, that people would live and work in Blue Lake. It's no longer a logging town. When we moved here 35 years ago, there were three grocery stores here. We are now in a food desert. If you can't get to town to go to the grocery store or to Murphy's Market. So I think you really need to put, take off the rose colored glasses and look at the real world that we're living in. And finally, your attitude of not in my backyard has got to stop. You're more than willing to put a complex in my backyard, but you're not willing to put one in your own backyard. You really need to own up to that. That's what I got to say.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I'm not exactly sure what that's about, but yeah, I particularly, I, I don't want to have an AUD in my garden, okay? An ADU. I don't, I don't particularly want that. So if that's what that's about, that's true. I don't. All right, are there any other, okay, Carponi and then Kat again?
Um, yeah, a question came up for me around the new businesses coming in. I'm wondering, because I have not been involved in this conversation, but I'm wondering, was a survey ever made, taken in the, in the community to, to find out if certain businesses or, or to ask the question, first of all, if business came in here, what would you like? What would you like to see? Or if businesses came in here, would that keep you here for shopping or would you still go to Arcata? I'm just thinking of getting more information from the, the community. And if, if you didn't ask the questions of the community, I think that that would be really, really important, would give you a much better idea of what your chances were for getting what you want. Think, getting what you think you are going for.
Yes, we've done, we've done surveys in the past. We haven't done one real recently, but yeah, things came up like wanting a, a bank or an ATM or something like that. I mean, I've, I've heard talk that the post office might at some point become their own little bank, but that's a federal decision. But a market has always come up, you know, we, we did have a market when I first moved here as well and where, what is now the thrift store. And again, it, it is difficult to sustain something like a market when you can go to town and, and get produce and food cheaper and other things cheaper. But yeah, we've done, we've done surveys in the past and things have come up as far as what people want.
So surveys in the past, that brings up my, another question is how far in the past, because as we all know, things are very changed right now. Things are nothing like what they have been in the past. So we're looking at a new world. So when you're, in my view, when you're planning something new in this environment, and I don't mean the, the redwood trees, I think that a current, a current survey is really important. So I don't know when the last one was, but you know, if it was, if it was three to five years ago, it's out of date, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Kat, would you like to chime in?
Yes, thank you very much. I've been trying to balance and really consider what it is that I want to say and how I want to get it across and to take away my emotional reaction and so that it can be better received by the council members. and so that it can be better received by the council members and anybody who is listening tonight. My concern is, uh, because we do seem to be talking about, uh, the, the ozone over there and talking about including the residences and including buildings. And, uh, then, of course, that expands to, uh, you know, a ten percent increase or is it going to be more kids at the school? My concern is that this really began as a dialogue in February with what seemed to be an accelerated timeline. I believe at the last city council meeting, um, this was a real hot bus issue. I don't think anybody was comfortable after that evening. But I want to express my discomfort and my concern with you council members because what I'm hearing, and Adele, I don't mean to target you. Um, I know that you're really coming forward in what you feel and what you believe. My concern is that I feel this is a foregone conclusion. I feel as a member of the community here, that we are just being told the justifications after the fact. And I'm really concerned about taking a large number of individuals into one small location, trying to justify that also or adding retail, which is also really shaky right now. And then to have all of these folks in a location that's going to impact a truck route that we have already failed to address. I know that's one of the things on the agenda tonight. But in a nutshell, I'm concerned that the council members are already moving forward with this in a manner that doesn't include the community that you represent. And I would ask that you really seek other alternatives in this, other opinions. I just, I'm not feeling like we're getting an open mind, whether it's at City Hall or on the council.
Okay.
So respectfully, that's what I ask.
Okay, thank you. So, um, representative government.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd love to comment on that. So, um, I want to separate out some of the things that you said, Kat. And so you're talking about several different aspects here tonight. And so one is the opportunity. Two is what's on the table right at this moment, which is updating the general use plan essentially. And then you're talking about development in the business park. So that I, I see these as different things, but, uh, as part of the bigger discussion. So the land use, um, general plan, land use update started several years ago. It started with the Planning Commission and they went through a process that was publicly noticed, included members of the public. Uh, feedback, comment, you know, everything was a transparent process to discuss, um, the changes in land use. So then it then comes to the council for additional public hearings is what we're doing here tonight, which has been done um, several times prior to this. And, uh, let's see, Gary, I think I saw you listed out the dates that it was, that's happened previously. But, um, so this is to update the general land use within the city. Uh, it's quite outdated. Um, and I, Gary and Mike can speak to all of that. I'm, I'm not the professional in that. Uh, secondly is the opportunity zone, which again, started actually in two thousand eighteen with the Planning Commission publicly noticed, uh, members were present, everybody, you know, the community was involved in that. And they went through a whole process of developing this, uh, opportunity zone. And then, uh, it's brought to council for these public hearings. And so we've been having public hearings for, uh, a year, a little over a year now at each council meeting. Some of them were skipped because we were waiting, we needed to give staff time to bring things back. And Gary has put an enormous amount of work into providing information to the public in our council meetings. So then on top of that, so it's land use opportunity and then the development of Powers Creek District. So that's a, that's another subject. That's after all of this is, you know, worked out, we've under, we've gone through this process of um, reevaluating our zoning, looking at, um, opportunity, understanding the state mandates. And we went through a similar process for development over a year ago with specific builders. They never brought forth anything for, for essentially for development. And now, uh, Danco has come and said, hey, we have some ideas. And, um, here we're going to work on some plans and, and get some feedback. So I don't want to get stuck on numbers because we don't actually have anything, any maps, any designs, any layout to present, to actually have a discussion about with the public. Right? So I, I was like, I, I don't even know what it would look like at this point. So that, and that's moving forward into the future. So I see that as this, like, I needed to break those out because they're very different things. And, and I, I, I am saddened to hear that you feel that the members of the public have not been involved in this process for the last three years. Um, I mean, meetings are publicly noticed, they're posted at the post office, the Grange and City Hall, the agendas, Mandy's always available. You can call her, you can stop by and ask questions. Um, any one of our city staff, I mean, Gary's very responsive as well. So it's, um, I mean, I've even stopped by and chatted with, with Erica. So I, I feel that, um, I'm not sure what else. Do I need to go door to door so that everybody feels heard or like I, I, it saddens me to hear that you feel that we are not including the public in these comments. So this, this isn't a done deal. This is a, this has been a several year process. It's been going on since I've been, I was first elected more than four years ago and then re-elected recently. So I, I, it took me, it was a learning curve to jump onto the city council and learn about this process and all the other legalities that are involved in it. But, um, I'm open to feedback on how I can better include you or how, you know, if members feel there are other methods that we can use other than, you know, stop by and say hi, let's go for a walk, um, show up at these, participate in our commission meetings, our planning commission, public safety, economic development commission, parks and rec. I mean, there are ways to become involved in the community.
Thank you.
I just have one thing to add. That was really well said, Summer, and I do just want to hone in on the fact that what we're talking about tonight is changing from total industrial, which is what we have right now. The trail that we all walk on is marked as industrial. And what we're proposing is to put mixed use and open space and overlay it over there. And so when we talk about opportunities and why development hasn't come to Blue Lake in the past, we didn't have the zoning available in this area. All we have in this area right now is options, is industrial development. That's all, that's all that's available to us. So by changing to mixed use and open space, we're allowing for that potential. So we're not signing any development plans or, you know, we don't have anything like Summer said on the table. But what we have right now is only going to bring us, if Humboldt had any factories and logging left, that's all we would get based on the zoning that we have. So the city's looking at encouraging different types of development. And, um, we have done, did get funding, we have done a highest and best use economic analysis of this zone and of our city and the types of policies and zoning that would, that would be necessary to bring that type of environment that we all want to, to Blue Lake, that kind of community and village and businesses. And so we have that data and this is part of it. So I just want to make that clarification.
Thank you, Elaine. Um, Meg Stavsky, Kat, Elise, and then Lynn.
Meg, would you consider me responding since a lot of that was directed towards me?
I'm, I hear your voice. I'm sure it'll be fine. I'm not sure who just asked that, but of course.
Um, did Kat want to make a comment?
Y- yes, I think too, um, uh, both council members had spoken in there. Um, again, I was addressing, um, well, I see what is on the agenda. The bulk of the conversation prior to my comment had been specifically about that, uh, housing unit there and its placement. And my concern is the strong language in favor of that type of project, so much so it does appear to be a foregone conclusion. Um, as far as doing some, you know, what we have on the agenda, uh, I don't doubt that there has been a lot of research and there's a long history in that, uh, coming to this point today. I know we're all eager to get to that point. But, um, I have to say that the way it has unfolded so far, by bringing in residential, then the next step is that project. And I'm very concerned that that particular project is already front and center without real consideration for the whole community.
And other options.
And other options as well. So that's it. Thank you.
Keep in mind that there's actually not a project on the table. So that I, I ask that you refrain from referring to something that's not existent at this time. And, um, it, it makes it, like, it makes it hard to have a conversation when I don't have design plans in front of me to say, hey, let's go talk with my neighbors and members of the public and have it, you know, in a council meeting when they're not present. Like, I don't have anything to discuss with you because there's not a, a plan in place yet. And so what, until that comes forth, I, yes, like, I can't even have this, a, a discussion with you about numbers or number of units or type of business or how, like, how big the dwellings are, anything. So once we have draft plans presented, the next step would be bring it to a city council meeting and open it up for public comment and discussion. And so the, the great thing about an opportunity zone is that as the city owned property, right, you know, we have publicly owned property, we have this control over what's built there. There's nothing set in stone. Nothing's been agreed upon to build. There's no agreements with Danco or any other developer to actually build anything. So, yeah, there's nothing that's moved forward. It's just, I, I mean, I've heard this, um, in other conversations where, uh, you know, council's already signed it and done it and it's built. Like, wow, that, well, I wasn't part of that then. Because I haven't signed anything, I haven't seen it, and it's certainly not built. So until we have something to bring forth and discuss, I don't, I'm not going to get stuck on numbers. And, um, yeah, I'd like to be optimistic as well and see some changes.
Um, Adeline, can I add something to what Summer just said?
Sure. Jump in, Gary.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that, um, besides obviously council review of, uh, you know, whether allow, to allow a development to move forward on city-owned property, uh, the opportunity zone was written so that every single project that's proposed in the opportunity zone requires discretionary approval by the planning commission. And in a case of a project like the one that everyone seems to be speaking of, a conditional use permit would be required as well as site plan approval. And that requires three hundred foot noticing. In this case, we'll probably do more than that because there's a lot of public interest on it. It requires a public hearing. It allows the planning commission to receive public comments and apply conditions to the project to reduce potential impacts. The site plan approval process that would be required allows the planning commission to review the design of the project and the site design specifics and recommend modifications. So a project like that has a long process before it, uh, that involves review by the public, comment by the public and allows the planning commission to have discretion over the project. And we did that purposely, you know, we didn't want anything in the zone to be allowed by right where there wouldn't be that opportunity for public review. And as the council members have noted, you know, what we're considering tonight is amendments to the land use elements uh, to incorporate all the amendments I previously described. We're also considering the opportunity zone, but we're not considering a specific development proposal at this time.
Thank you, Planner Reese. Um, are there any other input? Um, I'm, I'm kind of getting concerned about hearing from the same people. If you have something new to add, um, I will agree to have that discussion. Um, all right, we'll go with Meg, Elise, Lynn, and Kat.
No, 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 I'm not.
Oh, okay, sorry. Meg, Elise, and Lynn.
So very briefly, before I moved here from upstate New York, um, I lived in a community that went through, um, these kinds of, um, pressures from the state and the federal government to, um, open up, uh, opportunity for housing in areas that had not had, uh, previously been that open, you know, i- if you had, you know, a million plus dollars, which is, a lot of that is happening here in California right now. Um, even in, in our little area, um, yeah, the, so it wa- it was as open as could be for millionaires and billionaires. But for, you know, just ordinary people, not so much. So I guess my, my question would be, um, uh, how much is driven not by rosy glasses or, you know, whatever those kinds of, uh, phrases are, but actually that, you know, there's state mandates that are changing because California has one of the highest rates of houselessness and poverty. And, um, people are, you know, uh, noticing that and we've act- California's lost a, um, uh, you know, a congress seat because, you know, people are, uh, moving out, uh, because of some of these issues. So, um, I'm, I, so the question is, um, what is inevitable because there's pressure? And of course you want to put a good, good face on and good faith that the, you know, the good people of the planning commission, et cetera, et cetera, will be, um, looking out for the interests of a beautiful little community. I'd move there in a heartbeat if I, if I could afford to. But you don't have anything there, um, to be able to be afforded. And, you know, one of the issues that's been spoken about a lot is, you know, a chicken egg kind of thing. Of course, it's a commuter, commuter, community when there's not, um, a market available to go to, um, to walk to especially. Though, you know, those are kinds of things that are, are being spoken about. So, and I guess I just want to, um, comment one. Uh, I, I'm very concerned when I hear, I think it's good that I've heard, uh, the issue of, I don't, you know, don't want things to become a dumping ground because there, it puts it right out in the open as to what are the, what are the concerns? You know, um, and, um, that's a, you know, that's an unfortunate, but, uh, a pretty common thing to be saying, well, I don't want people that I don't know or don't look like me or whatever. And, um, those days are gone, folks. Those days are thankfully gone. And we are all in this together. It's a round world and a little blue marble. I'm, I'm done with, with, you know, that, but, you know.
Perfect timing because your time just, just rang and I felt bad interrupting you, but we're done, three minutes. Perfect timing.
Hey, that was a three, that's what a three-minute discussion sounds like or a presentation. Thank you.
Um, Meg, really quick, Adeline.
Yeah.
Just really quick, Adeline, I just want to say, Meg, thank you for being here tonight. And, um, I appreciate your viewpoint. Um, and I appreciate that you've attended past meetings too. So thank you for pointing that out.
Um, Elise, and then Lynn, um, and then Mandy. All right, Elise, go ahead.
Thank you again. Um, I would like to say thanks to all the council members for the hours and the dedication that you guys, um, have, can, have, uh, made to our city. But I feel like I, I still have to, um, bring up the issue of, of, of how you respond um, and the response, um, that we all, that attended the meet, the last meeting got from the city council. In listening to Kat and, and also listening to Summer's response to that, um, you know, obviously there's a lot, um, there's a lot of investment on your part into all of this. And you have a much better understanding of much of it than, than some of us do. I know much better than myself. But the overwhelming feeling that I walked away from the last council meeting with um, was that it didn't really matter how much opposition you heard from the people that attended your meeting. You went ahead and voted yes on the issue that every, that so many people asked you to delay on. And, um, and also we were told repeatedly that our, our perception of that issue was wrong. But our perception of that issue came from words that you put in the agenda, words that, uh, were part of your minutes. Um, you know, some of which, uh, came from Lynn because she attended the previous meeting and, and, um, and created a synopsis for us to, to think about. Um, so, you know, blaming isn't productive, obviously. We're, none of us is going to go forward with anything if all we can do is blame each other. But at the same time, we have to take responsibility for what we're putting forward. We have to take responsibility for our actions or our failure to act or react in an. We have to take responsibility for our actions or our failure to act or react in an appropriate manner. Again, my perception of the last meeting was that there was overwhelming resistance to moving forward to create the, uh, negotiating team as it was called. Part of what it was tasked to do was create, um, a way to pay for the property. I mean, the actual payment, the word payment was in your agenda item. So that really told the community that you were ready to sell this land, that you were ready to sell this deal. I mean, why else would you consider creating a team to negotiate payment? I mean, and I'm not trying to tell you what you're thinking, okay? I'm not trying to tell you what you're thinking. What I'm trying to say is that the words you use and the presentation that you make means a world to the people that read it and perceive it. And it may be different than what you're intending. But it still means what it means to the people, um, that are reading it and are on the other end of things. And so what, what myself and a number of other people asked of you last month was for you to delay creating that team. And you said, no, we're creating the team. The team is not what you think it is. The team is what we say it is and we're going to do it anyway. Okay, so, so in my opinion, sorry, you destroyed, you destroyed our confidence in you, our trust.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry you feel that way, Elise, because I actually got other feedback that said, good, good meeting last night, Adeline, good job. So, you know, I guess it's perception. I don't know. Um, I'm, I've always tried to be very open and transparent about what's going on. Uh, perhaps the word negotiation, uh, has a done deal look to it. I don't feel it does. To me, negotiate means give and take, talk, discuss, change. It's a, negotiation is a, a changeable word to me. And, um, it, it representative government means that you elect the people on the city council. And that's not, you know, you participate and we are listening. We are certainly listening. But this has been a long process. It's been, um, something we've gone over quite a bit and, um, and it's not over. I mean, it's not a done deal and it's not, you know, it, it's just the be- very beginning of, uh, some baby steps. Mandy, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to remind everyone that this is a zone, which means that it's an opportunity. And what happens with zoning is it presents opportunities for development and investment. And if the city isn't viable for investment or development, it won't happen. But if it is, and, and what, and if what we are seeing and if the interest that we're receiving is viable, then the zone is there to help facilitate that. So it's, um, I, I, I feel like there's some concern about the viability of business or we're thinking that we're going to be able to become something that we're not. This ju- this zone just allows for that potential to happen. It's not the city's dollars going into a development. If we're looking for others to invest in our community and we're providing them a mechanism to do that. And in the past, we provided a mechanism for people to invest in our community on an industrial scale. And we got things like the biomass plant and Talgon carbon. And those industries have gone by the wayside now. And the city has looked at creating opportunities for other types of development to come in. And that's what the zone allows for. It allows for economics to drive investment. And we've put in a lot of safeguards into this zone. We've thought it through. We've talked about it. We have a good feeling for it. We've received a lot of positive feedback on this mixed-use type of development. We're only now getting pushed back because it actually is looking to be very viable. And so there are some people who are, you know, raising concerns because now it's starting to look like, hey, maybe we're on the right track. We're, we're getting a lot of really good interest. And, and to answer some of your questions about business, we've done a lot of analysis. There's a lot of work that's gone on behind the scenes. Uh, we have really good staff who work really hard to look at this issue and to look at development and economics and to see where Blue Lake really falls in our region and what kind of our economic footprint, um, can look like. And, you know, we do have a lot of viability and we've, we've studied, we've, you know, we've received funding to do analyses. We've, uh, you know, we, we've put this out and we're getting a lot of really good businesses that are interested in coming out here, but ultimately it's economics that drive development. And if the economics aren't there, that's what we won't, we won't get a project. And that's okay. Maybe, maybe we'll get some more light manufacturing like, um, like David would like to see down there. Um, if that's what the economics say makes the most sense, the zone allows for it. But if economics say mixed-use development, residential, retail, commercial, food businesses, a market, recreation-centric development, more trails, people biking, if that makes more sense, then this is, this zone allows for it. So really we're just creating opportunity for things to happen.
Thank you, Mandy. Lynn, your hand is up.
Thank you. Um, just two quick comments and then I have a question about, um, what Elaine said. One is to Gary, who's talking about the protections that the, um, planning commission give to these projects. I think people would have more confidence in that process, except the city council has reversed the planning commission a number of times, more than I've ever seen before in the 45 years I've lived here. So that, that renders that process a little bit less, less reliable, I think, in some people's eyes. The other is that, um, Elise's comments I've heard reflected by a lot of people. She was not, she was not the only person who feels this way. And I think just the simple action of establishing a negotiating committee for a project that we've also been told doesn't exist has been confusing for people. But my real comment is, remains, I guess I'm really interested, Elaine, um, in, because I've been saying in the number of years I've been part of the public hearings and the public planning commission hearings about this process, I'm really concerned about the economic, um, engine that the, the industrial parks, the Powers Creek district, whatever it is, will supply for Blue Lake and how important it is. We've, you, but you referenced a report, an economic report, and I'd really like to see a reference to that. And I think Mandy said there was some, there've been some economic analyses too, and I would love to see those. Could you be specific about that? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll let Mandy talk about the highest investment use analysis. We had a presentation at a council meeting probably a little over a year ago before COVID for sure. Um, and I don't know if it's on the city's website, but it should be. Yeah, we can provide that, that information. But a lot of what was developed out of that analysis is what's driven the opportunity zone and it's driven our investment in a recreation-based economy. And that's really what we've been focusing on is trying to create an economic base for the city, which we don't have one right now. And we're severely lacking, um, based upon recreation investment, which includes the, the Powers Creek district as a central focal point.
Yeah, and I might also want to add that our lease with Blue Lake Power ends in 2025, um, which is one of the reasons why I got on the council because, um, it's coming up faster than we know. And I, for one, do not want to extend their lease. They've come to us a number of times asking for extensions. And I don't want them extending. I, I don't want to extend their lease. Um, and, and Elise also mentioned something about selling land and it's my feeling that I, I don't want to sell any more of our land. I want only lease, leases to happen on any of these projects going forward. But back to Blue Lake Power, um, the, the lease, uh, that they have now, which will, uh, expire in 2025 says that the land needs to be put back the way they obtained it. So that means a structure that's there now somehow is going to have to be removed. Uh, anyway, that, that's, I'm just bringing that up as a sort of a critical part, but also that Blue Lake Power does bring a lot of revenue to the city. And when they go away, it goes away. I, I'm still saying I want them to go away. Don't get me wrong. But I am looking at the economics of it. What is going to take the place of that? Think about that as you wrap your mind around these discussions. Gary and then Paul.
Great. Thank you, Adeline. I just wanted to kind of provide a little bit of background about the requirements of state housing policy in the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Several of the council members have touched on this issue, uh, during the discussion tonight. And really kind of the reality for the city is the state currently requires the city to plan for a variety of housing types, to have adequate sites in the community where housing can occur. And as others have noted, there's not a lot of property left. And that property primarily exists on the western portion of city limits and has a lot of environmental constraints like drainages and wetlands and things of that nature. So, in order to comply with state housing policy requirements to identify adequate sites in the upzone for high-density housing, staff and the council and commissioner looking at the Powers Creek district is the best opportunity and the best sites to see that type of development. And several of the planning commissioners have asked, you know, because they, they're concerned about high-density housing, the community, affordable housing, things like that. And they've said, well, what would be the consequence if we didn't do this? If we didn't change our general plan and our ordinances to plan for affordable housing and high-density housing? And essentially what it is, is one, you could be sued. Uh, there are housing advocacy, advocacy groups out there that have specifically sued jurisdictions for not planning to provide a variety of housing types. Uh, you also can lose out on essential funding from the state, which is, the city has relied on for years for a whole variety of programs, including infrastructure, ADA improvements, et cetera. The one that's new is that the state is now saying you will lose local control. If you are unwilling to plan for this, if you are unwilling to identify adequate sites and zone them for high-density housing and affordable housing, we will create policy that takes that control away from you and we will make sure that that affordable housing happens in your community. So this process that we're trying to go through is the city trying to be in charge of how these amendments take place and find creative ways and appropriate places to, to provide this housing and meet state requirements. And this is, these are the best solutions we have come up with. And, you know, we're hoping we're able to achieve compliance with state housing policy and not have those consequences happen to the city.
Thank you, Planner Reese, for really giving a full description of what the stakes are here. Uh, Paul.
Adeline, one last, uh, comment before you move on. Just, uh, a time check and then also a reminder that, in, in discussions in the community, uh, you know, each of us, each council member has different folks that they talk to in the community and, and get feedback and emails and phone calls. And, um, I would say that, the, the comments I have gotten prior to this meeting in regards to the last meeting, as well as, you know, moving forward, have all been positive. Or have been apologies for the last meeting. And that, that, that it was misunderstood and that, uh, but they were all fine with going forward because they realized that maybe they were, they were receiving only parts of the, the, the story before the meeting. And so I'm, I'm saying that, um, I, I hear your concerns and your comments about, the land use, the opportunity zone, the Powers Creek district. But keep in mind there are, uh, the rest of your community has comments as well. And the interesting thing is those that are very supportive typically don't show up. So, which is unfortunate. I wish they'd show up and provide their commentary and why they're excited about this as well. So, um, that's it.
Thank you. Yes, and we are available by email too. We all have Gmails that, um, that, and I have responded to people from that as well. Uh, Paul, you had one more comment to make?
I was, I was just going to ask, um, at, as a city, are you able to offer incentives to businesses to move to this area? Is there anything that you could do to sort of like enable it financially? Cause it's, obviously we'd all love to support a local market or something. Is there any incentives that the actual city can offer?
I'll let Mandy answer that. I mean, yes, there are, but.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's definitely a host of opportunities to attract business to a community. Um, the city's been looking, you know, to, to lay that foundation. And I think, you know, we've been successful, um, in, in doing that, you know, we, we helped to facilitate bringing in the coffee shop. Uh, we've been, you know, investing in the town square. We've been investing in marketing and, you know, strategically, uh, making improvements to the community, looking at infrastructure improvements. Our biggest problem right now is not a lack of interest in businesses coming to Blue Lake. Our biggest problem is a lack of space. Uh, we literally don't have any buildings for people to locate to that are available. And, you know, we, I think people would probably be very surprised at the level of interest that we have in, uh, businesses coming to our community. And, um, you know, and maybe you'll be pleasantly surprised when, you know, there's more to, um, present to the community for comment as we move forward. Uh, but, you know, one of the big things that we can provide is, you know, zoning like the opportunity zone that, you know, allows more flexibility and allows things to come in in an easier process. And, uh, you know, being efficient and effective in our permitting, our review process, um, and being a welcoming community, um, goes a long ways. And like I said, it's, it's interesting to hear people talk that, you know, Blake isn't viable for business and that, these things, you know, can't come to fruition. And I think maybe you'll be, you know, like I said, maybe you'll be pleasantly surprised to, to learn that your, um, your assumptions are incorrect. Um, and I hope to prove all of you wrong by, as we move forward, as we look at, you know, responsible development. And I've always said, you know, I'm, I'm from Blue Lake. Um, I have a son here. I have nieces and nephews. Um, this, this community means more to me than, um, than most things. And, you know, I think, you know, we're all looking to bring the right type of investment and, um, to create a safe and wonderful, you know, community that, you know, that we all, that we all cherish. So, um, I feel really good about the direction the city is going. And, you know, I think you should have confidence that things are moving in the right direction. And hopefully we'll be able to instill more confidence as things move forward.
I see the Russos have their hand up. Is that Alicia or Ryan?
Hi, Adeline. It's Alicia.
Hi.
Hey, I just wanted to make, um, our comment about the ozone and I, how much support we have for you guys. And I really appreciate all the hard work over the last few years with, you know, going to all the planning commission meetings and the city council. I feel like it's really well-written and responsibly written. Um, as, uh, someone who owns a parcel down there, I can say that we have a list of people who are interested in coming into Blue Lake with their businesses, whether it's for office space or manufacturing, also residential. So I just wanted to say, on a positive note, there are people interested and we fully support the ozone development down there.
Thank you, Alicia. Good to hear the children in the background too. Okay. Okay, um, seeing no other hands, I'd like to, um, entertain a motion that we make, a, a motion to adopt resolution number 1184, Resolution City Council of the City of Blue Lake, amending the land use element of the Blue Lake General Plan and amending the general plan map. Would anyone in the council like to make that motion? Oh, you know what? I, first of all, I want to close the public hearing. I'm sorry. I first want to close the public hearing. All right, now, is there a councilperson that would like to make the motion to adopt resolution 1184?
Yeah, I move with that.
Adoption of resolution number 1184, uh, amending the land use element of the Blue Lake General Plan and amending the general plan map to apply the mixed use and open space designations to the properties in the Powers Creek District.
Very nice, Becky.
Motion made by Chris Curran, Executive by Elaine Hogan. Any further discussion from council? Anything from audience? Okay, um, city clerk.
I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding. This is a, um, motion to pass the A. We're just talking about A right now.
Yes, yes, 5A, right. Okay, um, city clerk Sissa, would you take a roll call vote, please?
All right, um, council member Curran?
Yes.
Council member Doherty?
Yes.
Council member Obada Dunn?
Yes.
Council member Hogan?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes. It passes five to zero. All right, we're on item 5B. Introduce and conduct the first reading by title only of ordinance number 539 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake, amending title 17 of the Blue Lake Municipal Code to adopt an opportunity O zone within the city of Blue Lake and to amend the zoning map to apply the opportunity O and open space recreation X zoning classifications to properties in the Powers Creek district formerly Blue Lake Business Park. There will be a discussion and a possible vote. Did we have a staff report to start out with this?
Yes, I can. I can give that.
Thanks, Planner Reese.
So as you noted, this item is for the amendment of the municipal code to add a new zone called the opportunity zone, which we've touched on quite a bit in the prior discussion, and for amendments to the zoning map. And so just to give a little background, from 2017 to 2019, city staff in the planning commission worked on the creation of a new zone that's intended to be applied to the rebranded Powers Creek district, which is the former business park and prior to that industrial park. And this was for the purpose of encouraging new development opportunities. The zone, as we've noted several times tonight, is referred to as the opportunity zone. And it's intended to allow a variety of commercial, manufacturing, and residential uses. And the overall intent is to allow a beneficial mixture of businesses and residential uses to provide more of a live-work type environment and generally to reduce the amount of industrial zoning, you know, in the business park is one of the reasons why this zone is being created as well. So in April 2019, the planning commission adopted its recommendation to the council for amendment of the municipal code to add the opportunity zone to the city zoning toolbox and amendment of the zoning map to apply the opportunity and open space recreation zones to properties in the Powers Creek district. And as shown on the maps included in your packet, the opportunity zones proposed to be applied to properties north and south of Taylor Way that are primarily zoned for industrial and light industrial uses. And these are the same properties that the mixed use designation would be applied to. And then also the open space recreation zone is proposed to be applied to portions of the Powers Creek Rhyperan Corridor and the Mad River Levy that are currently zoned industrial and light industrial. And these are the same areas that the open space designation would be applied to. So similar to the land use element amendments, the recommendation from the planning commission for the opportunity zone and zoning map amendments was received by the city council at the May 2020 meeting. And from May 2020 to February 2021, the city council held public hearings and received public input on the proposed amendments. And there was a lot of public comment received. And we worked through issues related to lighting impacts, building height setbacks, and especially potential shading of the trail along Powers Creek. And so this item's been scheduled for a public hearing tonight, so the council can begin the adoption process for the proposed amendments by introducing and conducting the first reading of ordinance 539. Now, as stated in the staff recommendation in the staff report for this item, it's recommended that the council receive this report from staff about the proposed zoning amendments, open the public hearing and take public testimony, close the public hearing and introduce and perform the first reading of ordinance 539 by title only. And then it's additionally recommended that the council continue the public hearing to the May 11, 2021 city council meeting for the second reading and adoption of ordinance 39, 539. So that concludes my staff report and we're available to answer any questions a councilor public may have.
Thank you, Planner Reese. Are there any questions from council before I open the public hearing and take public testimony? Seeing no hands, I'm going to open the public hearing and at this point we will take public testimony. Again, I'm going to ask councilperson Elaine Hogan to give us a three minute warning so that we can get. Thank you, Elaine, so that we can get as many comments as we can on this item if necessary. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment on this ordinance? Kit Mann?
Thank you. I was holding back my comments during the land use section because I recognize that most of my comments are related specifically to the ozone and the zoning. Adeline, you used the term "in the spirit of transparency", and I think that that's one of the most important things here. As you heard in the previous public hearings, there is a lot of concern about Danco's proposal. People, many of us feel, and and there is evidence out there, that that project is moving along in the background. And by the time it comes to us technically as a project, it will be such a locomotive that we will have a choice of either getting on or getting run over. And that we don't, that we won't, in fact, have much choice. So it's all wrapped up in the ozone. We we recognize the the flexibility. I'd also like to say that Gary's description of the consequences of not meeting the state's housing element requirements is very helpful in understanding why we may need to do something out there. But you have heard there is a tremendous amount of concern and belief that Danco project is the thing that's going to happen and it's going to convert the entire industrial park to high density housing that will convert it into the most dense housing section of the whole city. So my comment is that I believe the city needs to make a greater effort to inform the public. Just, you know, Summer's comment was good. People that are opposing something tend to show up more readily than people that are, you know, supporting it. But just a little bit of citizen activism in February got 75 people to the council meeting to listen to Danco's proposal. It shouldn't be up to us to make that kind of effort, to get that kind of word out to people when talking about this. So my my primary thing is, don't be doing stuff in the background and and be saying stuff in the foreground. The the words and the actions need to be matching. I know that Mike Wilson has been talked about, talked to about this, the Danco project. I know Sonoma has talked about the Danco project. I know the Danco project is moving along in the background. We want to know about it and it's your responsibility to be telling us. Thank you.
Thank you. I for one have not heard about Mike Wilson or Sonoma Drone knowing anything about this, but maybe you know more than I do about it. I don't. I don't know that they do. Any other comments or public testimony concerning this item?
Adeline, can I speak as a member of the public and as a member of the council? And I'll say it right now and I'll say it in the background behind the scenes that I don't want to see high density housing in Powers Creek district. So I don't want to see stacked housing. I look forward to a mixed use type of development. So I'm happy to say that publicly and I'm happy to say that behind the scenes. And with that, you know, with all the public comment that we've had, you know, back and forth for the last year, I appreciate Kit, your input and how you've participated and that you showed up continuously and provided, allowed for that dialogue. So I appreciate that, those that have shown up and participated for the last year plus, including the planning commission. So, yeah, and I look forward, you know, I heard the proposal at the February meeting and that was a verbal proposal. And I look forward to seeing something on paper from Danco so that I I have a visual to actually have a conversation with people. So I, you couldn't come to me right now and say, you know, what are their plans and what are they doing? Because I literally have seen nothing, but I look forward to seeing it and having those discussions.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Summer Doherty. Are there any public testimonies for this item? I don't see any hands. Gary, did you want to chime in again?
Sure, I I just wanted to talk about the density that's actually allowed currently in the way the opportunity zone is drafted. The the residential density that's allowed in there is basically the same as is currently allowed in the mixed use zone, which is applied to the area around the downtown. It's also less dense than the city's R3 multiple family zoning district. It's one unit per 2,500 square feet is what's being proposed here. And that's not particularly dense. That's about 17.4 units per acre. Standard high density zones in other jurisdictions go up to like 30 something units per acre. And that was a big consideration for the planning commission is they did not want to create a zone that went beyond the R3 zoning district, which allows one unit per 2,000 square feet. So when we're talking about high density housing here, it's in the scheme of things as far as the state's concerned, this doesn't actually qualify as high density. It's more like medium density. And as I noted before, it would not be the densest zone in the city. That would still remain the R3 multifamily zone. So anyway, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. That's good. Meg, did you want to make a public testimony? Meg, your hand is up. You want to unmute and make a testimony?
30 seconds. So it, in my, in my experience, sometimes people use language like, for instance, high density housing, when what they really mean is, are 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 people going to be coming in that I don't want? And so it 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 it's the the language is couched by by calling it high density housing, which to me sounds like apartment buildings and things like that, you know, high density up and wide. And when you're talking about 2,500 square feet, that that already limits this development that, you know, your neighbors, Gary, your neighbors in your city council and your planning commission are aware of, and there's fear speaking here under using language like high density housing when what you really mean is something else. And I just, call it the retired school psychologist in me, I I think it's really important to bring it out and to talk about what the fears really are. And it's so refreshing to hear people talk about this in a way that cuts through and says, relax, we're we're trying to not only preserve the character of the community, but add immeasurably to the community so more people can enjoy it without saying you're going to have no infrastructure and you're going to have, you know, 500 children coming into the school system and on, oh my, what are we going to do? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Meg.
Adeline, I just want to comment on that. Meg, thanks for pointing that out. And I, my intent was not offensive in my language and I'll use language in a better manner next time. So thanks for pointing that out. My point was that looking, after going through this opportunity zone language, we have kind of this visual and it was actually something that Cash presented a couple of years ago. He had a drawing that had, it's like a schematic that showed what could potentially happen. And it was green space intermixed. So when I say high density, I'm thinking, yeah, stacked apartment buildings. And that wasn't, the goal wasn't that. The goal was to create green space, to protect, you know, the trail, to provide for potential residential or commercial, residential and commercial businesses, offices, but not to have it solely residential. So that was, thanks for clarifying and I I'm still learning sometimes what different languages could imply or mean and be perceived as. So thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. Well said, Summer and Meg. We do use a lot of these terms and then, and it gives a meaning that we may not really want to convey. So transparency again is important. Gary, did you want to further clarify?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little more information about, you know, the development standards that we included in the opportunity zone. You know, one of the important things that we thought was very important is that no development could be entirely housing. At least one third of every development has to be commercial or non-residential in some way. And that was an attempt to make sure there had to be commercial or manufacturing or something like that in every development. We also got a lot of public comment on lighting and we incorporated the strictest lighting standards that the city has in any zone. There was also a lot of concern about shading on the trail and we are requiring development standards that allow increased height for the buildings with distance from the trail. So, you know, I just think it's important to note that, you know, we did work pretty hard on on drafting this opportunity zone to be protective of some of the various resources in the city and have standards that would minimize the impacts of development that would happen in this zone. And, you know, I want to reiterate that we made sure that everything required some kind of discretionary review by the planning commission, whether it be site plan approval or a conditional use permit for larger projects. And although, you know, some members of the public may not think that that's a very rigorous process, you know, the state wants you to not require discretionary review for housing projects. You know, they want you to have zones where that's not required. Well, that's not something we were willing to do at this time or in this way. So we were trying to be protective in that way as well to make sure there was always going to be some kind of discretionary review that happened for development in the zone. So I just wanted to point out those particular items that are in the opportunity zone.
Thank you for clarifying that. And this was a living document. We have made a lot of changes to it, as you pointed out, with referencing to shadowing and preserving the trail and height and setbacks and that kind of thing. And, I mean, the beauty of being an incorporated city is that we have control of these things. You know, we're not in the Killingville or some of these county areas where it's, you have to go all the way to a Hummel County Planning Commission to to make these decisions. We are small enough and we have control of what we can do. And we have done that with this document. We've changed it. We've tweaked it. We've listened to suggestions and we've incorporated them from our citizens. And I I think it's it's been a successful endeavor. We're still in a public hearing. I'm looking to see if there are any other comments. I see Dave Glenn would like to make a comment.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm, well, first of all, I'd like to reiterate that I feel that basically residential housing in the industrial area is is incompatible. Those two uses are actually incompatible. And I noticed in the staff report there and in the document that you're going to do, you're going to make findings that say that they are compatible, that this this, the changes in this ozone are compatible with the existing uses. I don't think that's true. Gary, even in your, even in your explanation in your staff report, you talked about the idea of live-work, of of live-work environment. This is not a live-work environment. That's what I thought it was in the beginning. And when we first came to the planning commission about a year and a half or two years ago and we were discussing this, we were concerned about the introduction of residences. And what it seemed to us that you were talking about at the time was either live-work or 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 a security person that needed to be there 24 hours. Now, those are both appropriate to incorporate into an industrial area, but the, but this is not inappropriate. This is, is this is incompatible on a number of of areas. And we're going to get to one of them in the next public hearing on the noise ordinance. It it's just the the ozone in its introduction says that the that the the residential uses will be secondary, but they won't be secondary. The minute you introduce multifamily development into there, the the needs of those of of those residences are, those residents are going to take, they're going to take a higher priority. they're going to take a higher priority than the needs of the, in the, the needs of the light industry that's around them. And, and I, and I totally agree with, with Mandy that there are opportunities for economic development in Blue Lake. I, but I disagree that, that they lie in this kind of retail commercial uses that are going to occur downstairs from the apartment houses. They're not going to. And the reason that they're not going to is because the kind of businesses that might, that they are going to be encouraged to, to, to locate there are basically, they're basically customer-based and we don't have the customers to do them. And that's why in the 12 years when I tried to work in downtown and tried to apply this kind of, of approach to the downtown area, I never could get businesses to locate. And the developers that worked with me would just come back to me in a year or two and they'd say, we tried, but we can't, we can't find any tenants. So is it okay if we convert the, those spaces downstairs to residences? And we kind of gave in at that point. And like I said last time, to my knowledge, what we did was we put in a condition that if, if any time, that it did become commercially available, that we would, that they would have to change them. And they would have to kind of kick out the people or rearrange the people in their building and, you know, allow the commercial thing. Not one single unit ever converted back to, to commercial. The only commercial areas we have now are areas that have always been commercial. Not one of the ones that got converted to the, to the residences that came back.
Sorry, your three minutes just ran.
I know, it's almost up. Okay, I got one more, one more point right now. And that is that, that, that the other type of, of commercial and, and light industrial will not, light industry is not going to move into those spaces downstairs because those two are so incompatible that the, the businessman, person himself who's coming there is not going to want to be there. They're not going to want to be under the constraints of the people in that building. In the 12 years that I was on the planning commission, I had one, I had one project that has always haunted me. And that was the, the, the okaying of the tenplex at the corner of Gili and Charlton. It was way too dense for the neighborhood. It was, it was, it was almost a crime, I feel right now, to the way that we wrapped it around the single-family residence that the Carlsons live in. And, and every time I go by that, that development, I think, what the hell was I thinking? I'm afraid that five or six years down the road, when, when, when either the Danko project or some other project that is, seems to be along the same lines of that, it, what, you guys are going to be the people saying, what the hell were we thinking? Because you're not going to get those retail and commercial areas and because you're going to put a damper on the light industrial that's currently there. Anyway, I seriously, seriously hope that I'm wrong. I hope Mandy's right and your, your vision of a village within a village is right. But I don't, I have no faith in it because it didn't work for me and I don't see how it's going to work for you. Thanks.
Well, thank you for your input. I mean, the only property I'm thinking was the Sawatsky Corner property from the thrift store, where we left that open for businesses and nobody ever did come in. But we've had other businesses like the thrift store. I'm thinking of even the, the Carlson's building, where we now have business underneath and we have the property above, that we have residents above. And, and those apartments, Dave, are, are being, are housing people. They were housing Delarte students for a long time. And may I remind you that you were the one that put in the Blue Lake power, which we've had to, now we have to contend with. True, it is giving us a lot of money and that, you know, I'm thankful for. But I certainly hope that we can see that property go back to the way it was. And that happened while you were on the planning commission.
That's true.
With all due respect.
Yeah, that's true. And, and, but there was also the, the Woody Swaberry's project, Kitty Corner across from the store, which
That's the one I'm talking about. That's the only one I really see that you're talking about, that we actually had, have never been able to get a business in there. What other ones are you talking about?
And there was also the Woody Swaberry's other property up at the, up at where the, the laundromat is, where they were, where Al had his, his video store.
Yeah, but there's still a laundromat there, so it's still a business. You're right, though, the other one went, we could never get it to go. You're right about that.
There's not a new business in there this month. We have, Brooming by Lynn just moved into that and she's really excited to be there.
That's where she went, okay. Oh, I saw that, but I couldn't figure out where that was. Oh, great. Okay, there you go. It was a success, Dave. Success. Are there any other public comments about this issue? All right, I'm going to officially close the public hearing. And I'm going to ask if the council has any further questions or comments or if they would like to pass the first reading of ordinance number 539 by title only. And may I just remind everyone that an ordinance is a little more, has a little more meat to it than a resolution. A resolution is one of the, an ordinance is more like a law. This is putting something into law, so it's very important. And we always have a, we're having a roll call vote on everything. But before COVID, we only had roll call votes on ordinances because again, they are that much more important. And so they require more diligence in how they're passed. Is there a council?
I'd like to motion, I'd like to motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance 539 by title only. And for explanation, I'm saying by title only because that means we don't have to read the whole ordinance before going through this process or read it out, we don't have to read it out loud in the meeting.
Thank you. Motion made by Summer Doherty. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Summer Doherty, second by Elaine Hogan for the first reading, ordinance 539 by title only. Is there any further discussion from council?
I appreciate all the input we've had along the way. And it's been really helpful to kind of work on this over the last year and receive input as we go. I really appreciated it.
Thank you, Chris. Any input from audience? Back to council for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Curran. I'm sorry, thank you. Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Obada Dunn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hogan.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes. It passes. So I will read the ordinance as it passes, the first reading. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake amending Title 17 of the Blue Lake Municipal Code to adopt an opportunity zone within the city of Blue Lake and to amend the zoning map to apply the opportunity and open space recreation zoning classifications to properties in the Powers Creek District, formerly Blue Lake Business Park.
And just to, just as a reminder that the second reading will happen on May 11th, 2021, at that regular council meeting.
Yes, and that will be the second reading and adoption. And there are still, you know, public is still invited to participate as always in that decision. We're now on 5C. Introduce and conduct a first reading by title only of ordinance number 540. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake amending Title 17 of the Blue Lake Municipal Code to impose noise standards throughout the city of Blue Lake and remove the individual noise performance standards from several zoning classifications, including retail, commercial, RC, mixed-use, MU, light industrial, ML, and industrial. Discussion and possible vote. Planner Reese, would you like to introduce this item?
Sure, I'll touch on some of the items in the staff report that was in your packet. And as you noted, this is proposing an amendment of the municipal code to employ, impose noise standards throughout the city as well as to remove the individual noise performance standards from several zoning classifications. And to give a little background, you know, the city has had a noise element that was developed in the 1970s. And that noise element recommended that the city develop a noise ordinance at some point in time. Well, that never actually occurred. And what was done instead is noise performance standards were included in specific zones, such as mixed-use and some of the industrial zones, where there was a potential for land uses that could have greater, greater noise impacts. So what we're doing here is we're saying, okay, well, you know, why not have citywide noise standards? You know, there's uses throughout the community, even in residential zones, that have the potential to cause noise impacts. So that's really what we're doing here. We're creating a section in the municipal code to have citywide noise standards and removing those specific noise standards in those, those particular zones and just referring to this new section. That's what we're proposing to do. And city staff and the planning commission has worked on this, starting in April 2020 to August of 2020. And the planning commission adopted this recommendation of the council for amendment of the municipal code to add a section on noise standards and the amendment to remove the individual noise performance standards from several zoning classifications. And that was done in August of 2020. And that recommendation was received from the planning commission for these amendments and in the October 2020 meeting. And so from October 2020 to February 2021, the council held public hearings, received public input on the proposed amendments. And a few revisions were made to the, the recommendation from the planning commission for the noise standards. And these were primarily related to the applicability of the noise standards to certain noise sources, as well as a process for waivers from the noise standards for specific events. And so this item's been scheduled for public hearing tonight for the council to begin the adoption process for these proposed amendments by introducing and conducting the first reading of ordinance 540. And as stated in the staff recommendation for this item in a staff report, it's recommended that the council receive this report from staff about the proposed amendments to add noise standards, open the public hearing and take public testimony, close the public hearing, introduce and perform the first reading of ordinance 540 by title only, and then continue the public hearing to the May 11th, 2021 city council meeting for the second reading and adoption of ordinance 540. So that concludes my report. And of course, we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Planner Reese. At this time, I'd like to see if any council persons need any further clarification. We have been discussing this for quite a bit before I open the public hearing portion. And seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and officially open the public hearing and take public testimony. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the noise ordinance from the public? Yes, Paul.
Hello, me again. Having, having just, having just, it's like, I dive into too many earlier meetings because I'm new to the area. But having now moved right on South Rail, Railroad, the truck noise throughout the night, the night is incredible. It is rattling the windows of our cars because the minute they get past the slow down sign, they just speed up. They come around that corner and at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, there's trucks going. And the noise is incredible. It's just, it's just, and we have two young kids, they're constantly woken up and just the minute they get past that slow down sign, even, even the slow down sign doesn't stop them. But the minute they get around the corner and when they come the other way, approaching the corner onto that, it's just, it's, they're revving, they're loud. It's like, there's no consideration that they're in a, a community. It's just, it's just ridiculous. I didn't, I didn't, I, I naively moved to Blue Lake thinking it's this tiny little town. I, I was totally unaware of this truck room. I, I, that's my own fault for not doing the research. But having lived here now and to have that every night is just incredible. I don't understand as a person who's driving a truck, you know you're coming through a built-up area, you slow down, but I know they've got their schedules. But I live here now and I've got my kids here now and my windows are rattling more than my teeth on a cold night.
Thank you for your testimony.
It's shocking.
Gary, in regards to the traffic, truck traffic and truck noise, if it is happening at 3:00 AM, that's clearly before the 7:00 AM quiet time that we have designated. Not knowing what the decibel level is where Mr. Elliott lives, I was just wondering if this ordinance would apply to noise coming from trucks at 3:00 and 4:00 AM in the morning?
So the, the noise ordinance is drafted is not generally meant to address truck traffic on the city's designated industrial truck route occurring within the public right-of-way. It's more focused on activities that are happening on private property or, or even public property for that manner. There is a section about things that constitute, well, this relates to community quiet hours, but things that constitute loud, disturbing, unreasonable noise. And several examples are given. And one of them is use of vehicles that are in disrepair in some manners, such that they're creating loud and unnecessary grating, grinding, rattling, et cetera. So there is a potential that if there's particular vehicles being used by a particular business, those could be identified if they weren't, you know, disrepair and causing unreasonable noise impacts. But beyond those kind of specific situations, this is not intended to regulate industrial or other truck traffic on the city's designated industrial truck route.
Thank you for that. Is there any further public comment on this item? David? Unmute, please.
Okay. Gary, is the, is, is this change in the noise ordinance, is this going to change the noise standards within the industrial area? In the Powers Creek District?
Yeah, it, it would apply to new uses, though. I, I'm sure, David, you remember the Blue Lake Power determination by the prior city attorney saying the noise standards that were in effect at the time they received their use permit in 1983 are the noise standards that they're subject to today. So the same privilege would be enjoyed by any existing business that's already there. They would fall under the noise standards that were in place at the time they got their entitlements. But new development going forward would be subject to these standards.
Okay, well then, I'd like to use this in, in my, in kind of bolstering or being a prime example of my argument about why high-density residential is not compatible with light industrial and the kind of uses that we currently have existing in this, in this area. That means then that we are taking the, the residents of this new, these new people that are coming into this multifamily residence and we're applying them to different standards than we do for the, the people in the rest of the park and in the rest of the city. The reason that it's okay for me to live only 300 feet away from the industrial area is that 300 feet then tends to make the noise that, that is in there, that they're currently allowed, which is 70 decibels at the outside of their, their property line. It, it attenuates it by the time it reaches my house so that it's not 50, it's, it doesn't exceed the 55 decibels that I'm supposed to get or that I have the right to get at my property line. But when we take and we stick any number of multifamily units in there, those people, they are not protected from that. And that's, that's exactly, that's, that's only one of the kinds of examples. But I think this is a very clear example that I can point out to you. I'm not just talking out about my opinions when I say that the, the, that the multifamily units are not compatible. There are a number of these kinds of incompatibilities that, that come up. And, you know, if we had a lot And you know, if we had a lot of time, we could explore them, but I, but I, I was really interested to see that the noise ordinance was actually on the. The thing tonight, so I was able to use it as an example of what I'm talking about when I say that they're incompatible. Incompatibility is not a, is not an abstract thing. It's a lot of concrete details. That make the, that make the um, the, the most, the residential uses negatively impact the. Um, commercial and, and light industrial uses as well as the light industrial uses and commercial uses impacting the, the residential uses. That's why we designed this entire area with the buffer of, of uh. Of, of Powers Creek and the Riparian thing. And that's, it's one of the reasons I didn't, wasn't fighting for, for no shade on Powers Creek and the trail. For no reason, I was fighting to maintain that buffer between the residential uses in the city. Which provide us with a good quality of life and the industrial uses that are going in that area. So, thank you.
Thank you for your remarks. The, the driving force for this noise ordinance was looking at early morning. Construction, um, gardening, um, uh, machinery, uh, barking dogs. And that kind of thing. Um, and I don't know that there would be a need for. And just a light industrial business to be working during those quiet hours. If they are, then they wouldn't be compatible.
Also, food industry, food, food business has the right to work during the night if they want to. What are you talking about? What do you mean gardening?
Well, I'm talking about people that start lawn mowers at six AM in the morning or chainsaws or that kind of thing. That's what started this noise ordinance and construction. There was a construction site. That the people were starting their construction before seven AM um, on a weekday and, and eight AM on the weekends. That's what started driving the noise ordinance. And when we went to the city to talk about, to see what the city had in terms of. Uh, how we could stop that from happening, there was nothing on the books. We looked all over the place and there was no, no ordinance or no law in our city. That said, anybody couldn't just start a chainsaw at midnight or something.
Well, Adeline, with due, with due respect, none of your examples uh, eliminate the incompatibility of the multifamily. And the, and the industrial uses around them.
Well, I, well, I, I, it's yet, we're yet to see what kind of businesses they're going to be. That would, would uh, affect residences. I mean, these are the ones I know of now that are affecting people.
Well, Blue Lake Power, even though they don't operate, still operate loaders and things like that. I mean, I'm, I'm, I fail to see the point.
So are you recommending that we have no noise ordinance in the city whatsoever? Is that your recommendation?
No, not at all. No, no, I'm, I'm recommend.
David, you've been part of this discussion for quite some time about the noise ordinance. So it's kind of interesting to hear you flip back to. Basically like, no, we shouldn't have any sort of noise ordinance. This is, this is. Okay, so I'm gonna interrupt you. If you could mute yourself for now, I'm gonna let Gary go ahead and bring in some commentary here. Cause he's by far more well versed than all of us.
Um, so yeah, if I could just kind of explain a few things that this, uh, these noise standards do. You know, starting off right, right in section, subsection A of, of these noise standards. It is identifying uh, uses, activities, processes um, that would not be subject to the noise standards. So um, these are things like, you know, activities at parks, um, emergency operations. Things conducted for public health and safety purposes, state or federal preempted activities. This is something commonly done by jurisdictions. Just to make clear, look, there's certain things that are essential that wouldn't be subject to the standards. Um, second to that is uh, Mayor Jones identified, there are community quiet hours in here. Because of some of the noise impacts that have happened in residential areas. And those are specified for, you know, kind of the weekdays versus the weekend and things like that. Um, and then, you know, there's a section on specific noise standards. We start out by saying, you know, unreasonable noise is prohibited. We give examples of what that is and how it's to be determined. Whether something is unreasonable noise. Uh, we also have specific decibel level standards in here. Uh, that, you know, need to be met. And really to uh, touch on what, what David was talking about, you know, we're keenly aware of. The fact that putting residential uses in an area where there's light industrial, even industrial uses has a potential to impact the future residents. With noise. And that's why we included a standard in here called Standards for New Sensitive Receptors. And then basically what we're saying in here is in elevated noise environments and that could include near industrial operations or major roadways. Because, you know, the sound levels of Highway two ninety-nine go up to sixty decibels about halfway into the city. And people experience that on certain properties. So we're basically saying that if you're putting in a new noise sensitive land use such as housing. Uh, you, you must do an exterior and interior noise analysis. To ensure that the future occupants are not subject to noise levels in excess of the standards stated in the noise standards. And we're going on to say, you know, if it's determined that the noise level standards would be exceeded. Then the projects have to incorporate mitigation measures uh, into the project design. And so, you know, I've worked on a number of, of large housing projects throughout Northern California. And I've seen a number of noise studies done and acoustical experts design residential units. So that both the act, outdoor activity areas as well as the interior of these units are able to meet acceptable noise standards. When in the midst of light industrial, even industrial uses. It's not uncommon to see these uses located near each other. And for sound attenuation to be incorporated into the projects to make sure that, for example, they're meeting forty-five decibels in the residential units. Or, you know, sixty decibels in the outdoor activity areas. So I think it's entirely possible for residential development in closer proximity to these industrial uses. To be designed properly so that the future residents aren't adversely impacted by noise. Now, it does cost a little bit more money uh, for the development to do that, but it is not out of the norm at all. And it's why we included this particular standard in here because we understood that that could potentially be an issue.
Thank you, Planner Reese. Um, Paul Elliott.
So can I, can I just ask, it's like regarding the decibel level, who is, who is responsible for measuring that?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's always been our planner that had the decibel meter and he would go out and, and. Use it from the nearest resident to the industry that was going on in the, in the industrial area. Um, is that still the case, Planner Reese?
So it depends on what particular situation you're talking about. In the case of new sensitive receptors, an acoustical expert would have to be hired. To do uh, ambient or current condition noise readings to figure out what the current noise levels being experienced in that area are. And then based on that, they would have to design the units, the building, the outdoor activity areas to meet the city standards. So that would typically be done by a professional in acoustical engineering, that type of thing. When it comes to say complaints, citizen complaints about a particular business that's, you know, operating. Or, you know, noise in residential areas, the enforcement of that could be dealt with in a couple of different ways. You know, oftentimes when noise issues happen, people call the sheriff or the, the local police to come out and deal with it. You know, late night parties, things like that. But if we're talking about, say, uh, an industrial business that seems to be causing. You know, a, a new industrial business causing, you know, impacts, that's something that could be done by, you know, our firm SHN. Who provides planning and engineering services to the city of Blue Lake. Or the city could choose to bring in, you know, an acoustical expert. But essentially, you know, we would go out there and based on the standards in this noise ordinance, it, it states how you're to be measuring noise. You know, you measure it at the property line of the receiving land use of the recent sensitive receptor. And if the standards can't be met, then, you know, that particular use may have to incorporate mitigation measures. Or reduce hours or whatever the effective measure may be. So just to kind of summarize, uh, in certain situations, an acoustical expert would be hired to do this. In other situations, it could be done uh, by city staff with, you know, adequate noise measuring equipment.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Paul?
It, it does. Uh, I, the other thing I'm gonna say again, naively because of being a new one. So did the, did the trucking firms that have the trucking route through the town get a sort of like a pass on their trucks? Because living right on that road, if sixty decibels off the freeway is considered quite high. I can pretty much guarantee you it's way louder than that when they go past. So do they, are they not, are they just, I don't know, are they absorbed from all of this noise?
Well, our truck route has a long and, and sad history. Basically. Basically, we don't have much alternative is the problem. I mean, uh. Short of uh, maybe at some point, and someone will say that I'm looking through rose colored glasses. We'll have electric vehicles and they'll be really, really quiet. Um, it's been a problem.
Let's uh, let's add to that, that of course, as a city, we can't hinder the business of somebody else who's, who's operating. Um, a business. And so uh, I, I hear you. I mean, I live, you know, two blocks off, one block off of Greenwood and two off of uh, the road that you're on, Paul. And I can hear it as well uh, intermittently. So it's definitely not nearly as loud as yours. Especially when you described like uh, chattering teeth on a cold night, but it's pretty good. But um, it, it means, you know, this has been a, a route that's been established for, I don't know how many years. Manny can add to that. But uh, we, we can't hinder a business from hauling through. This is essentially like their only route other than Weston Road. Uh, to, and there have been other options looked at, however, they were not successful as far as rerouting. But um, so that leads into, you know, uh, which a presentation on the truck route study that was conducted. That um, both Mike and Gary are here tonight to also present on. And kind of what we found and like options that can uh, moving forward. And that was a, a public survey that was, that was published recently too. So I hear what you're saying. It is loud and it's obnoxious. And there are some truckers that are respectful and some that are not. And I can guarantee you that Mandy calls each one of those trucking companies and tells them they need to slow down. Their drivers need to be slowing down. Um, but there's, there's only so much we can do as a city. As far as, we, we can't stop them from driving that route.
Maybe it's because I've got big ears, like just catchers.
Yeah, I hear very well too, and it's a, it's a blessing and a curse. But I mean, the issue of our truck route being right in front of the school has been a problem throughout the years. We've tried to change the times that the truck route would go by. So that it wouldn't affect the students that are going into school or that are let out, but students are let out at three different times. Um, when it, before COVID anyway. So it, it's, our truck route is not, is not a good situation. I'm sorry you found out about it in that way.
You live and learn.
Um, Lynn Glenn, did you want to make a comment? Lynn's hand was up, but I don't know if she wanted to make a comment or not. Are there any other comments from citizens? Lynn? You're muted.
No, that's okay. We don't want to. Thanks.
Oh, okay. We saw your hand up. Thank you. Are there any other comments? I don't see anybody from the audience. Okay, at this time, I would like to close the public hearing. And introduce and possibly have a um, a motion to have the first reading of ordinance. Five four zero by title only.
I motion that to approve the first reading of ordinance five four zero by title only.
I'll second that.
Motion by Summer Doherty, seconded by Chris Curran to have um, the first reading of ordinance. Five four zero by title only. Is there any further discussion from council? Any discussion from audience? Back to council. And again, this is a roll call vote, not just because we're in COVID, but because it is an ordinance. City Clerk Sousa.
All right, um, Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Obada Dunn. Councilmember Hogan.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes. Okay, we've had um, the first reading of order numbers, ordinance number five forty by title only. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake, amending title seventeen of the Blue Lake Municipal Code to impose noise standards. Throughout the city of Blue Lake and remove the individual noise performance standards from several zoning classifications. Including retail, commercial, RC, mixed use, MU, light industrial, ML, and industrial M. And it passes. And we will have a continuation of this on May eleventh. With a second reading and adoption possible. All right, moving right along, we are on item six, Regional Climate Action Plan Presentation. Humboldt County Planning Department Staff.
Hello, that's me. I'm Connor McWiggen, County.
Hi, Connor.
Hi, everyone. I uh, I have a presentation and I'm going to kind of breeze through it a little bit. The goal is basically to give the city council and everyone who's here today an update on the climate action plan, which is a project. Myself and other staff at the county has been working very closely with Mandy, uh, Amanda Mager and Gary Reese. So we've had this project going, which is a collaboration between the county and all of the cities in the county. To reduce greenhouse gas emissions through collaborative climate action. And I'd like to share my screen. I know it's getting pretty late. It's nine ten, so I don't wanna. Do too much of a presentation, but I have some graphics and. Uh, a couple of slides that'll help give the council an idea of where we're at with this project right now.
Hey Connor, I gave um, screen sharing uh, authorization. You wanna see if you can share yours?
Yeah, I'm gonna give it a try. Can you see the PowerPoint deck here? Okay, cool. So yeah, as I mentioned, I'm just here to give a high level intro to this climate action plan. So in this context, this climate action plan is a, it's a plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And it was first initiated in fall of twenty eighteen. And we've been slowly and steadily working on it together with the seven cities in the county. As well as Redwood Coast Energy Authority. And these are the first uh, three steps here we've accomplished. We, we've put together a, an inventory, looking at where all emissions come from for the year twenty fifteen in Humboldt County. And uh, right now, we're working on this first draft. And that's why I'm here today to just basically update people in the council. So you're all prepared and a little more uh, privy to the project. So when the draft comes out in a couple of months, we can get those discussions going. This is basically describing some of the requirements that the state through the California Environmental Quality Act. Some of the requirements that are placed upon these climate action plans. And I'd like to come back to, this is the driest stuff in my very quick presentation. And because everyone is probably, I know how these meetings go, so I'm gonna come back to this at the very end. In about five to ten minutes. The first thing I want to show you all is the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So one of the first things we did with this project was put together. Uh, this inventory with the help of Redwood Coast Energy Authority. We found that for the year twenty fifteen, transportation is the single highest source of emissions. Followed by stationary combustion, which is mostly the use of natural gas and propane. Then electricity consumption and livestock are two other major sources of emissions. And industrial sources, which aren't a super relevant piece of the climate action plan, but it is, it does factor into local emissions. And then here are some other sources of greenhouse gases in the county. This is just some more breakdown. And here's the emissions by jurisdiction. So these are all of the jurisdictions. You have the county in the seven incorporated cities that are participating in the climate action plan. Blue Lake, I'm not sure if Blue Lake's populated. What's the population of Blue Lake? Five hundred?
About thirteen hundred.
Oh, it's much smaller or much bigger than I thought. So yeah, Blue Lake is, that's interesting because Trinidad is a smaller city, but I guess has a higher share of emissions. But mostly the this tracks pretty closely to uh population share. And the reason I'm showing this is because it's important to recognize that even though this is a collaborative effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we're doing this, we're setting up this project in a way so that, for example, the city of Trinidad, who is responsible for one percent of countywide emissions, uh focuses on what the city can do to reduce their share. So if it's Blue Lake's responsible for point five or responsible is not a good word. Let's say point five of emission percent of emissions within the county for the year twenty fifteen could be attributed to activities that took place in Blue Lake. Then the focus for Blue Lake's portion of this climate action plan will be, how can we as a city focus on tackling this uh slice of the pie that could be that corresponds to activities within Blue Lake? So that's just important to mention because even though it is a collaborative effort, you know, there a lot of that sixty percent, for example, of emissions that happen within the county would be attributed to activities like livestock operations that don't have much compatibility with some of the sources of emissions in smaller cities like Blue Lake. This is a time breakdown between nineteen ninety and twenty fifteen. Just showing that if you look at the left two columns, you can see a huge drop in emissions between nineteen ninety and twenty fifteen. And that's mostly due to the closure of industrial facilities related to timber processing. So after we have an inventory done, the next step is for us to establish a greenhouse gas reduction target. And we're from these state targets, we're recommending a target of forty percent below nineteen ninety levels by twenty thirty. This is not set in stone by any means at this point in the process, but part of this climate action plan will be to uh have a goal basically for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And here are some actions that we can take or some categories of the different actions that are included at this stage in the climate action plan. And uh over almost three years now, uh Mandy and Gary have been talking with us and attending our group meetings that we hold every month. And we've had a lot of discussion about uh what, how a city, a city like Blue Lake could apply some of these concepts that relate to climate action to uh local efforts. And I look forward to having those discussions with or participating in those discussions in the future. But for tonight, I just wanted to give a high level overview of some of the different angles that this climate action plan is looking uh at in terms of reducing emissions. Yeah, and these are some specific examples. You know, each one of these is sort of a headline and beneath the headline would be a set of actions in the climate action plan. For example, increased density of development. Well, I think it's clear what that means, but how it reduces greenhouse gas emissions and what it means to do that is not, you know, that in itself is not policy. So I'm not showing these as policy more as uh sort of headlines that have been pulled from this draft of the climate action plan. And because I brought that one up first, it's an interesting one. It ties back to land use planning. So one of the uh target areas for the climate action plan is to reduce transportation emissions, of course, because that's the highest share of emissions in the county. And two different ways to look at or try to address transportation emissions would be the clearest, which would be to transition away from from fossil fuel vehicles in general through vehicle electrification or, you know, other alternatives to personal vehicle use. Another way to look at it would be through land use planning to make our communities more walkable and bikeable in general. So that's just an example of uh how some of these general categories can boil down into specific actions. Now on to what we're up to with this climate action plan at this moment. We've I've shown you what one of the first things we did, which was create that or develop that greenhouse gas inventory in partnership with Redwood Coast Energy Authority. We worked on uh finding a target that may work for Humboldt County that we can move towards as a region. And now we're working closely on that first draft. So we have this internal draft. It's like the first first draft. And we're hoping to refine that into something we can bring uh to the city councils by early summer, by June or maybe July. And at that point, once we publish that first draft climate action plan, we'll have a series of public workshops. And it will also lead to beginning the SEQA process, so review under the California Environmental Quality Act. And now I want to come back to those two slides that I skipped in the very beginning because this is just an important, I have to undo all of those slices of the pie. Okay, so uh yeah, California Environmental Quality Act, many of you may be familiar. For those of you who are not, it's basically there to give the public a chance to hear the potential environmental impacts of projects and of certain types of projects. It also gives decision makers a chance to weigh those impacts in their decision making process. So there there's this incentive through the California Environmental Quality Act to create these climate action plans so that projects, when they come down the pipeline in the future, that have to look at greenhouse gas emissions as part of the SEQA analysis process, they can point to a climate action plan and say, we're going to do X, Y, and Z because it's in the climate action plan and therefore our emissions are not going to be significant. And that basically gives communities a chance to shape these climate action plans so that they can serve as a general program that projects can follow to reduce their emissions. So it's not just a high level planning document necessarily. It can also be, you know, translated to things that are getting implemented in projects in the SEQA process. And the final element to this project that I did want to make sure to get to today is in the next slide. So I just described some of the things that we've done with the climate action plan so far, where we're headed. And a lot of the questions that I've gotten in the few years of doing this kind of revolve around the general, people wondering, is this something that that the state is requiring us to do? Or are we going to be punished if we adopt a climate action plan with a certain greenhouse gas target and don't reach it? And I think that this is the best way to answer those questions and to speak to one of the biggest questions we have about the climate action plan at this point is to talk about these two different outcomes that could come out of the climate action plan. The first would be a qualif- what we're calling a qualified cap. So that would be if the climate action plan, if we wanted to use this climate action plan for futures, future SEQA tiering or streamlining, sort of how I described how future projects can refer to XYZ in the climate action plan, specific measures, and then apply them to their projects to get that less than significant greenhouse gas finding. If that's how we want to set this climate action plan up, then there are certain requirements to implement, monitor, and update the plan. Another route that we could possibly take would be to have what I guess you could call a non-qualified cap, non-qualified in terms of SEQA. So that would not be eligible for any tiering of greenhouse gas analysis. And in that scenario, there would be no requirement other than the city's commitment through the adoption of a planning document, no requirement to implement or monitor or update the plan. So this is something that we don't have an answer to, which we're going to take. And it honestly comes down to, I think, Mandy and Blue Lake City Staff, you know, it conversations between city staff, the public in Blue Lake and your city council. But you know, that's not necessarily something we need to talk about tonight because what I'm really more excited to bring to you all is a full, complete draft of this climate action plan, which should be coming in a couple of months. That's it for my presentation and I'm I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Connor. Very interesting. Um, are there any questions from council persons on this agenda item? Anything from audience? Meg, I see your hand up. Yes?
So um on one of the slides, you had a um that was by municipality. And I couldn't tell what the yellow section which came the first was unincorporated, Eureka, Arcata, and then yellow section, which was uh higher than the little teeny slices for like
That's Fortuna.
Ah, thank you. Okay.
I know, I was looking at the same thing and wondering about me like counting all the cities.
Yeah, it's missing a label. Thank you.
Yeah, it is. Good, good eye, Meg. Thank you.
And the the second question I have relates to uh what um RCEA has included in their um in their overall plan for Humboldt County, which includes biomass. And I'm wondering whether um in the long run that will be uh unincluded as a uh as a good thing. I I my my language is failing me. I'm tired and I'm old, but
We get your meaning. We get it.
Right, the biomass is, pardon me for the the pun. It it's a smoke and mirrors kind of thing where it's um uh not necessarily a really good thing uh for an area to have such heavy reliance on that. It's somewhat misleading. So I was wondering whether um that is something that's in the works as to hoping to reduce that reliance on um our very ambitious plan as a county to reduce greenhouse emissions.
Yeah, thank you for your observation, Meg, and thank you for that great question. I I want to just point all of that discussion towards Redwood Coast Energy Authority because they're one of the closest collaborators with us on the climate action plan. And we're not trying to duplicate any of the planning efforts that they're currently doing that are maybe outside of the specific cap project, but relate very closely to it as obviously our energy future and the role biomass plays is a huge part of it. So what I will say is that they have been working with stakeholders and scientists uh through a series of public, I believe, meetings to figure out how biomass is going to play a part in the renewable future for Humboldt County. And I know that the many different points of view are represented in those discussions. What I don't know is if anything has been decided on yet. But I I basically what I like to say is that we're following RCEA's lead. And I think RCEA is pretty committed to having a very open conversation about that. Because yeah, they're going to be responsible for executing contracts that determine whether or not we're going to be having biomass power, uh meeting Humboldt County's electricity demand. So yeah, it's a big question and I think we need to grapple with. So I think that if I can follow up, maybe the next time I'm here with some better information, I'd love to.
Thank you so much.
Summer, aren't you our liaison to RCEA?
No, it's Chris.
Okay, Chris, has that come up? Has the biomass issue come up uh in the latest RCEA meeting?
Yeah, it has. And uh we're working towards reducing it. Um, our last meeting, we did approve a, so we're down to the Scotia plant operating. Um DG Fairhaven's no longer operating. Um, but we did approve a ten year um contract with the Scotia plant um from twenty twenty one to twenty thirty one. And uh it's definitely on our goals to reduce that. We're hoping that newer technologies will just come out in these next ten years that can really turn us away from biomass. It was just a little too soon this year to make that commitment.
Thank you for that information. Thank you, Connor. Any other questions? I thought I saw a hand. But now I don't. Okay. All right, um, well, that was a good presentation and some real thought provoking uh facts. Um, we're going to move on. Thank you, Connor, for sitting through our meeting. Um, to item seven, city of Blue Lake Truck Route Presentation, the city engineer will present the draft.
Can you add, I gotta interrupt. We're we're at nine thirty. And uh I think it would be a good idea to do a time check and to think about what we need to cover and consider moving some of these to another meeting and or uh the next round of public hearing maybe needs to be its own meeting instead of coupled with other stuff uh just to allow for time. So I I just think we need to take a census of how everybody's doing right now. I see some fading faces and, you know, tired faces and um, yeah, there's a lot of information tonight.
So um in view of that, did we want to um continue item seven to another meeting? Is that doable?
I would suggest let's check with Mandy on like what the priorities are and what is time sensitive.
Go ahead, Mandy.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I would defer to Mike about the truck route presentation. If we could handle that on maybe the May eleventh meeting, um we have the, we're gonna, we have the second reading and a working session with the planning commission, but I think we could facilitate um the truck routes at that meeting if that works with your timeline, Mike. Or is that getting too tight?
I can't. I mean, Gary, how's that with your SEQA? I guess we can deal with, I mean, we're pretty much. No, I mean, that that's, it is what it is. I know it's late and this is going on. You know, we're trying to meet our timeline, but I know there's other items on the agenda that people are on that are time sensitive as well. So in terms of our timing and funding, um, yeah, I mean, we did get our extension. We should be hearing from CTC on our extension. So for this process.
And Mike, from a SEQA perspective and even NEPA, we're still expecting the technical studies to be completed in July. Uh, so this wouldn't be a major setback from environmental review or technical study perspective.
Okay.
So we will continue item seven to the May eleventh meeting. Um, I know Stephen Wright has been here for his minor subdivision.
Yeah, I would recommend that we um that we take uh Mr. Wright's items uh because those are, those are somewhat sensitive. Um, and he has been waiting.
Yeah.
Can we also, maybe we just push item nine to later in May? Like the May, uh, the second, uh, the fourth Tuesday. I don't know the date off my head, sorry. Instead of um
Yeah.
The second one.
Okay, so I do know.
Just if we could have more often meetings that didn't go so late, that would be great. I'm happy to meet every week if we need to. Every other week, I mean, we used to have two.
Every other week. I mean, we used to have two a month, didn't we?
Yes, we did. Yes.
So yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Yeah. If needed.
So if you want to address Steven Wright's stuff, that means we need to pull a consent agenda item? Can we? Do you want that separately or pulled?
Well, I think we should do the warrants and the minutes also. Well, at least the warrants, I think we need to do. So. Okay, so let's move on then to item eight, Steven Wright. Minor subdivision, consider adopting resolution number 1185, a resolution of city council of the city of Blue Lake. Accepting the offers of dedication for the Wright minor subdivision. And we have a staff report on that. This has come before us already. I recall last summer, I think it was. Anyway. Is there any further discussion on this item from staff or council? It looks like I have to open a public comment on this one. So I will do that. Is there any public comment about the Wright subdivision? Seeing none, I will close the public. Comment section and look for a motion to adopt resolution 1185.
He's probably in the packet, which I didn't realize when I had printed the agenda out that they were also packing. And I struggle to find the agenda, so I screwed up. I'm not muted.
Okay, so is there a motion to? Adopt resolution 1185 from council, from a council person?
Can you give us just a moment? I, I'm, yeah, trying to find the paperwork and then just refresh my memories. I've read through it, but I just, there's been so much. Information tonight, just need a moment for myself.
Okay, this is the subdivision that's at 830 Railroad Avenue. Next to the cemetery. And I believe Mr. Wright came to us. He's been doing a lot of. Research on his lot line and that kind of thing so that he can determine. How he can make a subdivision out of that property that he inherited from his father.
Adeline, I can also just give a quick little background just to refresh people's memories about this.
Okay.
So yeah, this was a tentative parcel map that was approved by the planning commission in April of 2019. And then Mr. Wright has also prepared the follow-up parcel map, which has been reviewed by the city engineer and approved by the planning commission at their March 15th, 2021 meeting. What came to you before for this project was the subdivision improvement agreement? And Mr. Wright has constructed the offsite improvements for the subdivision per that agreement with the city. But prior to him being able to record the parcel map. The city council needs to accept the offers of dedication to the city that are shown on the parcel map. And in the staff report, it identifies two. There's parcel A. Which is a 15-foot wide public utility easement and drainage easement. And then there's parcel F, which is a 10-foot wide public utility easement. And as far as staff concerned, there's nothing unusual about this. It's very typical for the council to accept these offers of dedication and we're encouraging you to do so in this case, like. The council has for, for other subdivisions in the city. So yeah, that's, that's kind of the background on this one.
Thanks for the refresher. It had been a little while and I was trying to. Kind of, I recall it and then reading through it, I was trying to conceptualize like, wait, what, what did we talk about before? So I appreciate that and. I don't think Mr. Wright's still here. Oh, there he is. Hey, Mr. Wright, thanks for sticking around with us, so. If there are no. I'd be happy to make a motion. There are no other issues.
Okay, motion made by Summer Doherty to accept resolution number 1185. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Chris Curran. Is there any further discussion from council? Anything from audience? Back to council for the vote. Roll call, please.
Council member Curran.
Yes.
Council member Doherty.
Yes.
Council member Obadadun. Is she? Is she there? Okay, council member Hogan.
Yeah.
Mayor Jones.
Yes. Okay, it passes four to zero, I think.
Yeah, I, I had to step up and use the bathroom. Yeah, yes.
Okay, then it passes five to zero. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to item 10 consent agenda. So we have A, the minor subdivision, B, the warrants, and C, the minutes. Is there anyone that wants to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I would motion that we pull item C and include the comments that Meg had provided earlier, but otherwise approve items 10A and B.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to accept consent. Consent agenda items 10A and B. And a second by Chris Curran. Any further discussion from council? Anything from? Audience? Back to council for the roll call vote?
Council member Curran.
Yes.
Council member Doherty.
Yes.
Council member Obadadun.
Yes.
Council member Hogan.
Yeah.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
And then item 10C, the minutes. We want to include Meg's remarks. Concerning the group she was representing. Is that what I remember it as?
Right, I'm. Sorry, I'm not representing. I just, I suggested. Asking the Coalition for. Responsible. Transportation priorities. Which is located in Arcata. To. Help consult on the safety issues of the intersections and the speeds and all of that. It had been, name of the organization had been off of the minutes and I just wanted to. That name in there. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah, we'll add that then. Okay, the Coalition of Responsible Transportation Authorities. Okay.
So with that, with those additions, why to prove item 10C? Or a motion to approve it? Excuse me.
Thank you. Do we hear a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Summer Doherty, seconded by Chris Curran to. Approve item 10C. Further discussion from council? Further discussion from audience? Back to council for the roll call vote?
Council member Karen.
Yes.
Council member Doherty.
Yes.
Thank you. Council member Obadadun.
Yes.
Council member Hogan. And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Okay, is there any council correspondence? Item 11? No. All right, reports of council and staff. Let's start with. Elaine.
We've, hi, we've made an offer to a new executive director for Humboldt Waste Management Authority, so. Just pending the final. Steps with that process. And that'll be a big one for SB 1383. For reducing greenhouse gases and CRV and. A lot of things going on with waste management that that new executive director will be. A key part of, so that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Summer, did you attend any meetings this past month?
Yeah, we had Redwood Region Economic Development Commission met last night and. We have, I guess kind of the highlight was discussing the airlines are. Opening back up flights, so we have the flight to Denver and LA and San Francisco. And then we have a new airline that's coming in. It's. Let's see, Avelo, I believe is what their name was, and they're going to offer a flight from out of the Arcadia Airport to Burbank. And then, of course, additional discussions with other airlines are in. In progress to look at flights to Portland and Seattle. So that was a good, great news to hear and. And then the Chamber of Commerce met. A week or so ago. And some exciting news that they are planning for, you know, write this date down, July 11th for Annie and Mary Day. So the, the intent is to have a parade and have music and drinks in the park with. COVID protocols, social distancing, hand washing stations, everything in place. So this is all tentatively happening and planning with. With the understanding that we still have a negative growth in cases and hopefully a positive growth in COVID vaccines. And, but this could be canceled at any time depending on the situation within the county and based on state mandates, but. Understanding that. Hopefully, you know, we'd, we'd like to move into some sort of gathering in a very safe and responsible manner. So with that. We've, Manny and I chatted a bit about this as well and we could offer, the city could offer parking. In the Powers Creek District to help relieve some of the burden on the, the residential area close to the park. And, and also utilizing the city parking lot there. But it's just kind of an exciting time. I think everybody would love to see some music, but. You need to make sure that it's being done in a safe and responsible manner. So July 11th. Is a tentative date on the calendar for the Annie and Mary Day Parade. And music. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Delarte is going to be doing a Mad River Festival, but it's a very shortened Mad River Festival, something like three days is what I heard.
I believe they, they canceled that before.
Oh, really?
They changed that from what Marvin said, so.
Okay, I attended an HCOG meeting and we passed several appropriations for money to come to our area. We also discussed as usual, the 101 corridor project. Indianola Off-ramp is going to the May CDC meeting. For some final approval. Also the Last Chance Grade, which has been in the news quite a bit and they're down to again. Two possible ways, routes. One would be a tunnel and one would be just shoring up the existing area and then we had. An executive director's report from Beth Burks, our new executive director, and a report on Complete Streets. Which is a report going through the city of Eureka. So that's all I have. Let's see, Chris, did you attend any meetings?
Yeah, the, let's see, RCA. Yeah, just to touch up on earlier, we're working on. Extending the biomass agreement with Humboldt Sawmill Company. For another 10 years. And yeah, this, since DG Fairhaven went off. Approving this will. Get us about 70% of what they were producing when. Both plants were up and running. And we're working towards. Hopefully exploring new technologies that we can use these biomass plants for and not have to be. Burning wood chips all day. And. Economic development. A new Christmas tree might be coming to town square. And there's four new historical plaques on some buildings in town. I think it's the Lager. Chumayo, Delarte. And I can't remember the last one.
Nice, okay.
Yeah, I can look for. That was it.
All right, thank you. And Olivia Obadadun, did you read, did you attend any meetings?
I'm just, as Chris is alternate, I was also at the RCA meeting. But said everything way better than I could have. It was very interesting to hear and I, I. Felt like I learned a lot about the whole biomass thing and like that new. Like this material cellulose, something that's like. Lighter than like a fraction of the weight of steel, but really strong and. Can you say it one more time?
Nano cell.
All right, nano cellulose. And yeah, it was very informative. I, I don't know that Mandy has talked and I have talked a little bit about. That the Parks and Rec haven't really been meeting. I guess that would be my main other. Committee and then with the rancheria, so. I'm not really sure how to, I should initiate that, but. Right now, I, yeah, I haven't.
Has the Park and Rec Commission meeting, Commission Matt, Mandy recently?
No, they haven't. And it's one of the things that we need to get back on track. When we lost Nathan and all of our park stuff was kind of shut down. It was one of kind of the easy. Kind of low hanging fruits to, to kind of take off our table for a bit. We were pretty short on staff and. Just taking on another commission for myself was a little bit daunting, so it was kind of an easy one to, to let slide for a bit, but we need to now start wrapping that up because we've. You know, I let you guys know we received that EDA funding award. Parks and Rec will be a big part of that, so we need to get that, you know, get them back and moving forward.
Are we, have we officially, you said lost Nathan Saylor. Has he officially stepped down as our Park and Rec Director?
Yeah, he stepped down a couple of months ago. He's been, we've kept him on payroll. He's been doing a little bit of work here and there, just kind of. Transitioning us out. I do have Emily Wood, who's been kind of acting in his place. She was a student intern. And worked with Nathan for the last year. She's really, really good. She's got a degree in Parks and Recreation and Business Administration, so. She comes up with a lot of great ideas. She's, she's done a great job, so we just hadn't really been ready to fly the position, not really knowing. Where we were going. It didn't make sense for us really to incur the cost of having a parks director when none of our facilities were open or generating revenue. But now as we're starting to see things open up a bit, we're starting to get to a point where we need to advertise that position.
Will we be able to have baseball and softball on our fields this summer?
Yep, we actually have, they've already started, so we have Mad River Girls Fastpitch has been playing for the last. It started two weeks ago and our Wood Bat Softball League will be starting in May. And then Little League will be having some games out here also.
Okay, it's just a skating rink that cannot be open.
Yeah, we probably could look at applying for something, but I just don't think it's worth it. We don't make money off skating anyways in the summer, so and it doesn't make sense to try and do indoor events when we have great outdoor facilities.
Will we have a summer recreation program?
We are going to have a summer recreation program. We are getting a lot of interest. I think parents are ready to get the kids out of the house, so I anticipate we'll fill up fairly quickly.
Did you have a question, Olivia?
Oh, no, but I was gonna add that I don't know how this ties in, but the garden, the community garden. People and. They just hired and I mean, you guys probably saw that Josephine, who I know is now the, I think. Director and they're doing a lot of events. I don't know if that's something that's maybe part of Parks and Rec, but. So I think on Saturday they're having like. Some kind of community planting or something and I think Josephine wants to put together like. Newsletter and was talking about maybe doing like recipes of things that are commonly growing in the garden like salsa with some of the peppers and. So. Just mentioning that is something happening.
Yeah, they're doing a great job. The community garden's been highly successful and it's a really great addition fast space.
Okay, thank you council members for your report. Staff report is mainly the financial statement and report. Did you want to say anything about the financial statement and report that we all have?
Yeah, no, we're just tracking things really closely right now. We're still waiting. Yeah, no, we're just tracking things really closely right now. We're still waiting to see about resources coming in from the rescue plan and how that'll affect our budget. Scott and I are meeting this week to go over where we're at and how things look and where things can be moved around a bit. But we're trying to keep track of revenues. We just got our property taxes came in. We've had some of our reimbursements are starting to come in for some of our bigger expenses for some of the projects. So we're pretty much tracking online. You know, we just have lost a lot of revenue with the park going down. So that's been kind of a hole that we're trying to figure out how to kind of get ourselves out of, so.
We're supposed to get about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, aren't we, from the rescue plan?
Yeah, our project, I think, is two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty plus, yeah.
Wow, okay. But no, no, no idea of when that's coming in?
We're waiting for the guidance. We're tracking that on various levels through the legal cities, waiting for, you know, some additional guidance on how that can be spent. And then, once we have that, we'll be able to bring that back to the council and start looking at those numbers and what kind of investment strategies we want to, you know, follow and pursue.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from council on that item? We're at item thirteen, future agenda items. The manager's evaluation, is that starting to happen at all?
No, we need to establish a, two council members to do that. And I think typically what we've done is that has been in closed session because it's an employee review. And I see Ryan nodding his head.
I don't think so.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, so that needs to, any discussion as far as employee reviews need to be happening in closed session.
Even, even getting the people on the team, are that, that's in closed session too?
Well, if the council's going to appoint a performance review committee, that can be done in open session. But the actual substantive discussions should be held in closed session.
Well, yes, I know that, yes. But yeah, pointing, but that needs to be agendized as well, doesn't it? Okay, so we need to put that on a future agenda item. Any other future agenda items?
We have quite a few.
Yeah, there are a lot.
Well, we have the second reading of the ordinances that we just passed tonight.
Are those required to have thirty days between the readings? They're not, okay, so they can happen in sequential meetings. Okay, just wanted to confirm. So then, can, let's, can we minimize?
The second reading won't happen until a regular meeting.
No, it's scheduled for the next, the May eleventh, not the regular. So on our next meeting, which is May eleventh, we will have these, the ordinances as the second reading. And and then we have our workshop essentially with the Planning Commission. But I was wondering if we could limit anything else on that agenda, just so that we have enough time to cover any public comment and then time to have our workshop with the Planning Commission and not run overnight o'clock. Is that?
We had the truck route set for that night too, but we maybe can, but I think we have to do the truck route that night, May eleventh, as well. But we were going to talk about, okay, so any other future agenda items?
Yeah, we have a lot. Three presentation at some point that can go to the regular meeting in May. Parks Recreation Use Plan and a discussion of future council meetings.
And I would like that.
No, go ahead, Elaine.
So a lot of things came up around council meetings and meeting transparency. And we've talked in the past about recording them on Access Humboldt. People have mentioned multiple months in a row about getting full packets on the website. So if we could possibly roll that all into a discussion, like what was on the agenda for tonight for discussion and direction on hybrid meetings, I see them as sort of all related as far as transparency and meeting format and posting things on the agenda. It could be wrapped.
Yeah, and just so you know, Elaine, Summer has helped us get the recordings posted to Access Humboldt, so.
Oh, good.
We're already doing that. We just.
We actually do.
Up on the website also.
Right, so you can get it under the archive. We just got the notification this week that Jerusalem was working on that. And so we've sent over recordings that we have based on what was shared, saved in the storage, which we have limited capacity. So now we have a better understanding of their process and what we need to do. And so like the recording tonight will be sent to them pretty quickly and then posted. So they have it, and they're providing us with a link on their archives on where the Blue Lake Channel will be. And that will be shared on the website, the Blue Lake website, so that you can go back and look at those too. But it's in the works. It's happening.
Oh, perfect. Okay, great. That's exciting. Okay, and then we just have the land acknowledgement also, something we wanted to discuss. So it might fit into future meetings and hybrid meetings and formats, or it could be its own separate thing. I don't know. But all things related to how we do meetings.
Right, the hybrid meeting, because I had a citizen call me about that yesterday, wanting to know what's a hybrid meeting. And it's something we're talking about that we, if we're starting to all get vaccinated, that we could possibly meet in person at the Skinner Store, but also have people phoning in or zooming in to those meetings also. So we could have both going on at the same time. I don't know if that's harder than just doing what we're doing now, if that's more complicated. But that's what I explained to the citizen was a hybrid. Mandy, did you want to expand on that?
That's exactly what, what I would anticipate that we would do. I think it would be a little bit low-tech, but I think it's totally manageable. And in fact, we were doing that at the beginning. I was running the planning committees and other meetings that way, so.
So do we want to shoot for the May eleventh meeting to be a hybrid meeting where we'll meet at Skinner Store? We can be masked if people feel comfortable with, more comfortable with that. And all, but also have it available for people to phone in or zoom in. Do we want to shoot for the May eleventh meeting, or does that seem too soon?
I'm fine with that. Like I said, it's pretty low-tech. I just have my computer and the camera that can, you know, kind of, and we put you up on whoever's zooming in can be up on the big screen. So it's just kind of the same as if you were, we were sitting in this room together and everyone else is zinged in.
What's the feeling of the council? I'm completely vaccinated. I've been vaccinated for three weeks, but I'm still wearing my mask when I go to the store and things. So I'm comfortable, you know, either way. We can try to be physically distanced as far as being in Skinner Store, but sitting apart from each other. I don't know how, the comfort level of the council is what I'm concerned about, and the Planning Commission.
Also, will they be able to hear everyone if we're around the table and that'll work, Mandy?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically, you're just projected the same way we are now, but we would be together in one room.
Okay.
Now, we wouldn't have to bring our laptops. We just have yours to have the people in. What's your comfort level about that, Summer?
I'm fine with it. I would just ask that everybody wears a mask when they're in Skinner Store. If they want to stand outside and not wear a mask, then that's at their discretion. But and we provide for social distancing within, inside the store. So it does limit the capacity. But I think in light of, I mean, I've heard from various people that, you know, Zoom is a great tool. We've had more participation. Some people prefer to attended person. And so just making this available in multiple ways. You know, and this could change by meeting, you know, if we see a drastic rise in the cases, then, or the tiers change, then we should change how we conduct our meetings. But I'm comfortable with it. I would be there with a mask, vaccinated, if, even if I'm fully, I'll be fully vaccinated by then, but I would still wear a mask inside.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with Summer. Yeah, masks are like mandatory, and the windows should be open. And definitely capacity is limited indoors. So, I mean, if we have people showing up that aren't going to fit, and there isn't enough space, we're going to have to send them home to log on to Zoom. I mean, you know, there's going to have to be some expectation of how that's going to work, and I don't know.
Does the city have masks available for people, free masks? I mean, we could have that option too. All right, well, we'll shoot for that then for May eleventh then. We'll shoot for a hybrid meeting. And, you know, and in case we have to change that at the last minute, we'll do that. And just explain to people what it means, and hopefully they'll understand why we're doing that. So motion on number fourteen is to adjourn this regular meeting to May eleventh, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM. And to post order of adjournment. So moved.
Is that clear enough, Ryan?
Yeah, Mayor Jones and council, the reason we're doing this is we're essentially going to adjourn the regular meeting and reconvene as a continuation of the regular meeting on May eleventh, so that we can conduct the second reading as part of a regular meeting. And so it's a little bit different than a normal adjournment, but it'll allow us to reconvene on the eleventh.
Would you like the motion read fully then? Is that better? That be?
Yeah, I think for the record, we can read it out in full.
Okay, I motion to adopt order of adjournment of this regular meeting to May eleventh, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM to be held by teleconference via Zoom or as a hybrid in person. And to direct city clerk, the city clerk, to post the order of adjournment on or near the door of the place where the meeting was held and on the city's website within twenty-four hours after the time of the adjournment.
I'll take it.
Motion by Summer Doherty, seconded by Chris Curran, and noticed that she did include the fact that it will be in person as well at the Skinner Store. Any further discussion from council? Any from audience? Back to council for the vote, April?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Obadadun?
Aye.
Councilmember Hogan?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes. Okay, we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.